firing squad.
We're gonna start.
They may not know that we are starting earlier than they remember.
Okay, we're going?
Yeah.
Okay, it is Wednesday, December 8th, 2021. We'll call the meeting to order.
Please stand for pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
More than enough for him.
Okay, good little first. Joe, do you have any minutes or reports?
No.
Okay. Anything new? You guys? The only thing I want to invite you, remind you is at 1 o'clock on Sunday on the corner here of High and Monroe, we're gonna turn over all of our Toys for Tots to the Marine Corps League. So, uh, we've got two ambulances filled from EMS. So Eric, he's.
Got them filled up?
Yep.
Good deal.
And then we'll have some bicycles. Brian Voys' Motorcycle Club donated bicycles last year. They will be doing that again. And then we'll present all the boxes that we've got here, too. So there's gonna be a good load for the Toys for Tots Sunday. So if you guys want to come, you are welcome. Okay. So we're go all the other. Do we have any other finished business? No. New business. Budget discussion.
So I think we're starting with law enforcement fund today.
All right.
Eight inch one oh two. I thought you had to be out of town. Just for us.
I was supposed to take Rachel from the doctor.
I know. Did you bring him an apple?
Yeah, sort of.
Uh-oh, uh-oh.
Push it, push it. It doesn't work.
Changed my button.
You're sick, John. Okay.
Where did you find a yes button?
I hit the volume two and rebuild it. I had to check now on you.
No, who did that for you, really? Well, you weren't home for two weeks with COVID and stuff with.
There was some issues.
You could only play board games for so long and she was probably whooping your butt, so you needed a break. All right.
Okay.
Do you guys have this sheet there that he gave out? I was gonna just kind of go down it.
I don't have, but I.
Yep.
Yeah, we, yeah. Okay.
So we already adjusted sales tax to actual yesterday. Surplus property revenue. Was at 20. He wants it to go to 30. I don't have an issue with that. Do you guys have an issue with that?
We're at 64 right now.
It all depends on how many vehicles he sells. So the year before, we were at 27.
I can't remember how much. We just got like six grand for one of our new cars or something.
You guys go with 30?
Mm-hmm.
Well, we'll have it carried over anyway from the extra this year, so.
He did court orders, so he put that back in.
Yeah.
Um, federal prisoners. It's in 704. Going from 1,650,000 to 1,700,000? John, that one scares me a little. Have we signed the new agreement with them?
Well, we turned it in, so I think we asked for.
Just history there. We haven't been at that point. If the rate changes, obviously, that would make a difference, but.
What's more, when we're all in hold of 50 prisoners, now we're all in hold of 55. And the rate, the rate will change. We have not done a. We haven't renegotiated contracts since we stopped here.
What, what are you asking for in what's gone in? I mean, in terms of the new number?
102. I think it was 102.
102 times.
They will give us 102. I think a realistic number is probably 92. I would like to send 96, but I think it's gonna be 92. So that's some of the other surrounding agencies have got 92. We're a little bit different since we're right here besides the federal courthouse. So they actually like bringing prisoners because they don't have to worry about them anymore. Bring them out, so we'll take care of them.
Is the math 92 times 55 times 365?
Yes.
Which is?
I have it.
About a million and six.
Sorry, sir. I wrote down all the different.
1846.
1846? And if there is a change, is, will it be effective 1-1 or later in?
As soon as we sign.
Oh, sorry.
No, as soon as we sign.
But we don't have anything to sign yet because we don't, we don't have anything back.
Right. We submitted to them. Now the funds located, we sent it back to us.
I'm good at the 1650 or 17. You can have 17. He had 1650.
Other way around. He wants 17.
Oh, I'm sorry.
1650.
What did the math come up to? I wasn't.
1846.
1846.
And so if we.
Do you have 55 in there every day or does it fluctuate?
It does fluctuate.
So.
Take it times 50.
Now I'm gonna whisper since you put this down.
That's a 10% reduction off of max.
1679.
Makes you feel good, doesn't it? How about 1675?
It's fine. It's, it's, it's just kind of an arbitrary number anyway, so.
So you're not gonna do 17 now?
We're 25,000 short of that. Or do we hear more argument from, or not argument, but lobbying?
Your sales tax was a little higher than the one you projected to, so you've made it up in that line.
I understand.
Um, I'm gonna skip SRO for a minute just because that has to do with salary stuff. 911. So the sheriff proposes that we go instead of 7525 to, he pays two-thirds and EMS pays a third.
I think he, he's worked it out with Eric, although Eric says, says he will do it because he's a team player and not so much because he wants to.
Well, I tried to do it in half and half and he wasn't going for that at all. But, I mean, if you look at the numbers we're at right now, it's, it's more feasible doing it that way.
Yeah.
We can sit there and argue all day on it. I can argue both sides of it and.
Right now.
We dispatch our own people is my biggest argument. I think we talked with the sheriff, talked with Eric. Everybody seems to be like, we're fine with that. That's how we're gonna do it this year, but.
Yeah.
We may change it back next year for some reason if we need to fill some holes on, on EMS side. But hopefully in a couple of years, we've got a.
Dedicate.
2911 communication system. We, that money's coming in however we figure that out, so I'm fine with it.
Yeah, I am too.
So what line are we on now?
It is 58, no, 52811.
So on his sheet, though, it's under the expenditures.
Yeah.
Uh-huh. 600, 701, 52811.
So I think we actually used to split it 50-50 at one point.
Right.
And then we went back to there.
Our call volume was at 29,000 and theirs was at 12.
Well, I think the biggest thing, though, was we, we dispatch our own, so really they transfer the number over. So what are we getting for that amount of money? And it was money for EMS, so it's coming from the county one way or the other, so.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with it.
Find it.
Yep.
So that would change it from 313,174 to 278,376.
Yeah, it's a little different than what was that 276, but.
Yeah, I got the numbers. I guess a little bit wrong.
You need a wrong calculator with the bigger buttons.
So I'm gonna jump over to. The EMS side and change that one as well while we're talking about it.
Yep.
Theirs will change from 104,392 to 139,189. Okay. This, 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 this one. So the next one is to decrease the education line. I think that's the one.
Yeah, that, so that, on the expenditure side, 53265, that 15 grand was in there just to send people to LETI or to Lincoln University. ARPA is allowing to pay for scholarships for law enforcement academy, but not only do they pay for the, um, the, the class itself, but it also plays for living expenses, so it'll pay for all our salaries, too. So we actually, I submitted a request to you guys for that. It was a little over $70,000 to send three people. With ARPA money to get that done, so I no longer needed that 15,000 in that training line.
So really, John, you're not getting rid of that 15,000, though. You're dividing it up between training and the other three divisions.
Three divisions, yes.
So taking it out of here and adding it to 702, 3, and 4?
Yes.
It's 5,000 each?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You guys go with that?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
John, did you want that in, I'm assuming meetings, travels, and dues in the other three departments?
I'm sorry, yes. I should have put that on there and I didn't. When I write this stuff up, I try to make it in there to make it really easy to follow. Sometimes when I go over it so much in my head, though, when I'm looking at it, it makes perfect sense.
Okay, so 79. The other items are salaries, so do you want to? Do like we have been doing and leave all the salary stuff at the end?
Well, that's what we've been doing. We're, did you have to leave?
No, I rescheduled.
Okay. Are, I mean, are we gonna do that later this morning?
I hope so. Hopefully, we're gonna get through the rest of this book and then we're gonna start with new employees first and then do actual salary adjustments.
Okay.
Okay.
I just, that way sheriff's here when we wanna either cut it or give it to him, argue it, kick, scream.
I say we let that button make the decision.
Change those buttons.
So.
I say we get them both up here and then we kind of flip them around and you come up and pick one.
Okay.
Wait a minute. Oh, this one's taller.
I'm gonna tell them I don't have two of those no-buttles. You don't know.
Okay.
Okay, so after his budget on page 109 is his portion of the training fund. Again, this is an out account. He gets some reimbursement from the state for post-certification and then a fee as well from the courts that pay for a little bit of training. And then he also has the Sheriff for Evolving Fund on page 110. That's his CCW permits. That he can use to pay for anything related to CCW. And in there as well, you will see his MOU. He pays out of CCW for one and a half people.
I'm gonna go back to the training. So transferring those to 7, 2, 3, and 4, 0, 2, 3, and 4. I mean, it's still an expenditure, though.
Yes.
But then we're gonna just have the revenue from ARPA come in and it goes to those accounts or how does that?
No, so he had 15,000 in there for that and he just reallocated it to training in the other departments. He didn't really save anything there. He just shifted.
He's actually gonna spend some more money, but the more money that he's spending is ARPA money.
Correct.
Yeah.
So.
Where's it at in here?
Think of it this way.
It's gonna be in there, in the revenue at some point.
Well, hopefully that one would get spent directly out of ARPA if it was approved, but it hasn't been approved yet.
This is a non-ARPA budget.
Correct.
Yeah.
There is this budget and then there's the ARPA budget.
And the 5,000 that, for each division, so if I put the money for in 2865 or whatever that is for, um, just for LETI, then that's all I can spend it for. By taking that 5,000 and putting them in the division, that means I can use that for training for anybody, for my civilians also.
I guess how, how does that reduce expenditures?
It doesn't.
It's not at all.
No.
It's just moving it from one line to a different one, three different lines.
Yeah, there was no savings in that one.
Okay, so I'm looking at these, the budget changing stuff on top. I thought it was changing your budget, but it's really not.
Well, he showed it in two places, so he showed saving the 15 here, but then he spent the 15 here.
Oh, okay, kind of like the SRO, half the money's coming in. Okay, I'm sorry, I missed that part. I was just up on the top.
You had me going for a second, so I haven't had enough coffee yet.
Sorry, it's early. All right. Your witness.
You guys have anything else with the sheriff's fund?
Nope, thank you, though.
Um, so next is emergency services sales tax. This one has the other side of the 911, so I did update that. This has all EMS's capital, which we can talk about now or talk about later.
And again, it could be just a placeholder now and you guys decide when it comes time, you know, for them to bid it out or decide to start purchasing things.
So we did update the sales tax income in here. I also updated the transfer to accommodate the 60% of that increased sales tax number. So we've seen a few changes as we've made them prior to that have affected this fund.
All the, all the half cents are the same dollars and cents.
Yes, no cents.
But we're gonna, like in capital outlay, you've got ambulance. We're gonna need to change that number.
Uh, he's saying about 780.
Yes, he's saying that one is 780.
Yeah, so I mean, that.
I, I think it depends on which ones we decide to go with. He's probably, I think the number he's got in there is kind of a worst-case scenario. If we decide to go with the, is it type 3 or type 1?
1.
If we decide to go to type 1, it's gonna be more.
Well, I think that might be.
I think the 780 is worth.
Got one or more ones in there.
Right. That's the type 1s, but if we decide to go to type 3, they were less.
3, yeah. We've been buying 3s.
So we can.
Yeah, and we've got a little.
And I'd rather do it this way.
I would, too. We got some cushion there. And, and is there, is there some value of the ones that we'll be getting rid of?
Um, there probably is a little bit. Um.
And, and I'm not, there's gonna give us a little cushion there, too, perhaps, I guess.
So we had.
Yeah, we should get some back for surplus, but we usually don't get much.
Yeah, so the last one we sold, we got about 16,000, I think.
Right.
So a little bit of savings, not.
Well, that was a damaged one, wasn't it? Wasn't that a?
No, I don't think. I, we don't get much for them. They're, by the time they get them, they got, you know, a couple hundred thousand miles on them and, I mean, they're carrying around a big load, so they just, they don't carry a whole lot of value.
And he did say with the new ones, there's the possibility of the remounts, which we've done before.
Well, we should be able to remount those.
I mean, uh, we're not asking for three more, three additional ambulances. We're asking to replace three existing with three new.
Yeah.
So the three existing are gonna generate some dollars.
Yes.
Not maybe, not many, but that's just a little more cushion.
Yeah, I think we might have a couple of them or there that have some issues and, so I just don't see them bringing a whole lot. But yeah, we will, we'll certainly get something for them.
I can send you that list before.
There might be some, might be some deer campers that want a RV there, you know?
Well, if we put a cooler in there, you can hang your deer in there and insulate it. They're just, they're big and bulky, too. They're just, they're not like good work trucks. And, I mean, because we talked about using them for either maintenance or public works or something like that. They're just.
Do you guys wanna? Do you guys wanna talk about, he had a few other changes to his capital list as well. I don't think.
I think the bottom numbers where I'm just more concerned about is what he's gonna have and, because this list changes throughout the years. Sometimes, yes, other things become a higher priority. And when you go through that money, then that's all you got.
Well, so he did have, wanted to change the amount that's in there for the critical care bags. Do you guys want me to update that number?
That should be 15,000.
Yeah, I think so.
What about his Tahoe?
And that one wasn't in here originally because it was not in his original request, so would you like me to add that one as well?
I, I think we should start with everything and then if we had carving, we're carving off of a master list of everything.
I think he had a, his bottom number came down to 979,334.
Yes, that's.
I had 331.
I've got 334.
My handwriting might just be bad.
I've got 334.
I'll take four.
I write my numbers in cursive. Sometime they're hard to read.
No, I think he was saying the Tahoe, we wouldn't receive until 2023, but.
979,334 is the 199,334 in capital improvements and 780,000 in ambulances.
Okay.
Is there anything else in there you want to talk about?
I guess I, I'm just, I would be curious. When we throw all of these in here, the, what's the difference between cash forward and transfers out? Is that, or the, I'm sorry, cash forward and contingency? Are we gonna be still on the plus side?
482,025.
To the plus?
Yes. Um, that one is mainly because the transfer into his capital fund, we have kind of held back because he has good reserves in, are in his operating fund, good reserves in there that we're trying to spin down. But if he truly needed the difference in his operating fund to be transferred from here, that would not be the case.
Okay.
Which we'll go over that when we get to his fund there.
But we also, I, I think we're behind on an ambulance, at least one.
We are.
So we have three.
We didn't purchase any this year.
So that's a, he was saying one per year, but I.
Well, I think after we get these three.
I think we're, we're gonna have two per year that we're either buying or remounting to keep them in a good rotation.
That, that would be, it'd be like a seven-year life and on an ambulance, wouldn't it? Do we have 14? Do we call that a full fleet?
But there's still a question of whether we need that many, too. I think Eric had mentioned, so I, I don't know.
I think with 14, we got three of them there kind of sitting reserve-wise that aren't really fired up every day.
I think at one point, we had quite a few reserves. I think we were up to five and I'm thinking five was too much, so I think he's trying to back, back.
We were also having a lot of problems with the diesel motors, too, and so we needed them. I mean, we had a lot of them with some high mileage and that just really needed to be reserved or that we leave sitting at football games or something.
I was gonna say, that's the ones that sit at football games and county fairs and so on.
We also got all of those type, Tahos and stuff, too, to help with those calls, do some of those calls.
So this has nothing to do with our budget, but I was listening, I think it was to the Blair Oaks game and when the quarterback got hurt, it took well over 20 minutes for an ambulance to get there.
Well, one, one station there.
One station there, so I did not understand that. And that was even in the, in the playoffs. And I thought that was a Misha rule that basically, you know, if, if they do take off with the injured player, you really don't get to start the game until you have another ambulance on site. So I, I was kind of curious about that.
Did you get a resolution as to what happened or what didn't happen?
I didn't get to ask anybody or anything. I just kind of remembered it now, so, but.
Do you guys have anything else with the sales tax portion? And we'll move to the operating EMS.
Yeah, keep us focused. We can bust through this.
So Eric didn't really have any significant changes. We're kind of living within what we had to work with to begin with since he came in right as the budget was being prepared. I don't know if you guys have anything.
Wants to add dispatcher, but that's gonna be part of the later conversation. I think it's the only thing, only note I have.
So I do have that one in here at the moment, so it was included in my budget, was adding one dispatcher, just so you have that in your radar.
It, this is not really on point with the budget, but on, and going forward, when January ends or February ends, or let's say the first quarter ends, because we're, of how we got these numbers and how we, everything, many things have changed over there, we ought to stay on top of this thing at least quarterly and maybe monthly in terms of how's it tracking.
Right. Um, I think Eric's hoping that he's going to see some savings from what we have in here. I don't, I don't expect it to go the opposite direction unless something changes significantly. So he's hoping to kind of tighten up the budget a little and see a little savings from what we have in here.
Fuel went down two cents.
Thank you, Joe.
It only went up a dollar sixty in the last year, but I love that report. Fuel came down two cents in the last month.
So where is fuel on here, by the way?
It's got the 120,000.
120,000.
Yeah, and I was fine just leaving that alone because he had 100 and then on med supplies, there's a little difference on that. So if it comes down to, it's a wash between those two.
So I want you guys to be aware, if I take out the transfer in, out the cash forward and out the contingency, they have about a $2.1 million difference in their operating revenue and expenditures.
Not even counting capital.
Yes.
That's why, that's why cap region doesn't do it anymore.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
At that point, we're about a million.
So we are not currently transferring that much in. We are about a million dollars is what's in there this year to transfer in because they received quite a bit of CARES money for salaries and things, so we have, we have some reserves in there we're spending down. But I am concerned that you start adding an extra million they have to transfer over. We're gonna be in the red on the capital side and you're not gonna have as much to spend on ambulances and things like that.
We could get a false sense of security after CARES and after ARPA and then the gravy train stops.
Yes.
And we're stuck with our, our habits.
Yes, yes. So I think you need to make sure that we're taking a good look at salaries and things and making sure in here we're, we're trying to limit that growth beyond what we can handle after CARES.
I, I wonder what the industry standard is for a political subdivision having a ambulance service. They're not expected to be profitable, but how unprofitable should they be? How much subsidy should they receive from the taxpayers?
I don't know of very many that are owned, like owned by a county. Most of them are their own districts or they are private.
But still, the, those own, the districts are financed with a property tax.
Correct.
Is that property tax 30% of their revenue, 40%? I don't know.
I don't know either.
I think we had some of those statistics when we did go for this, the sales tax part of it. See if I can find some. But it then would be, what was that, 2,000?
Seven or nine.
Yeah.
A, a good one, just, it would be to pull the financial statement of the St. Charles District. It's a countywide, two and a half times bigger than us. They buy 13, 14 ambulances a year. And it's, it's a countywide property tax subsidized operation.
How am I broken?
They're, as I was saying, they got two and a half times as many people as we have. So I guess they'd have two and a half times as many.
Do they serve multiple hospitals too?
They sold, they serve St. Charles County. I mean, they cover the whole county.
So that's one thing I want you guys to be aware of.
Okay, that's a good point.
I didn't think we were that far off on that between, I mean, cutting in, because I thought that fund was pretty healthy.
It is healthy at the, it is healthy at the moment. They have a, you know, we're projecting a one-point-six million dollar carry forward from the current year into next year. That helps.
But a lot of that's due to the cares.
A lot of that is due to cares.
And we didn't spend as much, we didn't buy as much this year, I don't think.
Well, that's the capital side of things. So you're seeing that.
You're talking about the operating side.
I'm talking, yes, directly about operating.
Okay, so with the cares money, we were, we added like ten people to cover stuff and.
That is one thing that Eric should have talked about and he did not. So we had ten physicians that got added in with cares. I think they are retaining three of ten.
Okay, that's kinda where I was going with it. And to your also's point, at some point, those have to be gone. I mean, by attrition eventually.
Well, I guess, we could say they'll be gone when the China virus is gone. I don't know. I hear you though, yes. It was a temporary fix to a problem that needed addressing.
So we can either go forward with the budget the way it is this year, but, and then we need to keep this as a, we need to sit down, this needs to be a year-long thing.
Well, I think that they have added stations, so they have to have the three to continue those stations. So if you want to close a station, I think the ones we added was the one in Wardsville. We have one at Lincoln, which hopefully if we build a new station, would move. And the third one was where? County Park? No?
No, we've had County.
Is it down at Brazito?
No, we've had that too.
Or at County Park.
Was that the one we built out?
That, well, Wardsville, we did a little work there.
I mean, we didn't, we didn't add an ambulance for that. We just moved it from their main station out to Wardsville. That's just where they're stationed. So instead of having four sitting here or four crews, we had three crews sitting here and one in.
I was not in that discussion, so I don't know that.
I think the only other one is that one we've got at Lincoln there on Leslie.
We built another station out that we took from a twelve-hour truck to a twenty-four-hour truck.
Those are Fairgrounds.
Fairgrounds, I was gonna say.
Because we had regions west.
Isn't that the one we had a SOR issue with?
I don't know.
Or they had a SOR issue with?
I don't know. I get confused as to which ones, which station.
I think there was more flushing after the people were there than prior to that and the septic reacted, or didn't. Okay.
So if you guys want more information about that, we probably need to bring in.
Eric?
Eric, and let him talk about it because, yes, my understanding was of the ten, we have removed seven, but we.
Did we ever get to ten?
No.
We never filled ten. We never filled ten.
We, we had so much turnover that.
So yes, we, a quarterly review of that would be very pretty.
You guys got other things in here?
Yeah, I'm gonna dig deeper into that one later on. I don't, let's get through this part of it. And I think he's on the right track too, though. He said he thinks he can, you know, save some money, reduce some expenditures over the year, coming year. Because it seems to be going in the wrong direction.
It's all about that transfer, what it's taken to subsidize that enterprise fund.
Yeah.
I know, but we have to be able to buy ambulances and on the capital side. And at some point, that's gonna dwindle. And I don't think the price of those things are gonna go down at any point. So, okay.
So let's look at page one nineteen. These are the capital requests that have come from different departments. We have had a few that have been requested in addition to this list. One was some security things at the health department that weren't listed on here. The possibility of replacing the postage machine. GIS should have had a plotter on the list. I missed that. That was my issue. And then I think parks, something about parking lot at parks that Eric brought up. Those were the additions that I saw. There were a few things to be removed as well. Maintenance took off their pickup truck and snow pusher. Public Works took off the replacement of the garage doors. Juvenile removed the garbage disposal because it was completed this year. We don't usually go through and approve them individually. We approve an amount in sales tax for capital improvements. So I don't know if you guys want to continue to do it that way, if you want individual items listed out that you want to approve now.
What's the bottom number on that that's gonna generate this year?
Uh, let me pull up.
Because we try to save some of that for big projects, but we also have.
We will have two sales tax departments next year. You have about two-point-seven million in the current sales tax, the one we are currently collecting through the end of the year.
F?
I don't know.
I think we're up to H. H, G or H.
G has two-point-seven and then H will be coming in.
Yeah. And then obviously, we're not carrying anything forward into H because it will not start collecting until January.
That's about nine hundred to a million. That's probably a little bit more now.
Probably gonna be over a million.
I did update those. We picked up about twenty thousand dollars for their fifteen percent.
Just go right out of.
You guys tell me what you wanna do. I have put two-point-five-nine-five in capital improvements, a hundred and eighty thousand in computerization. And then we have some money that was set aside from the original G that has park improvement money left. That's about seventy-six thousand dollars that we have to spend on parks. That's in the old. Again, like I said, we have not started collecting the new one. It will come in as the year goes on. But, and I would like to build up, we usually keep about five-hundred-and-fifty thousand in contingency. So to kinda build that up the first year because of the lag in timing of collecting, but.
So from that list, you can pick and choose, but if you're not ready to, we'll just put a placeholder in there like you asked.
Well, and I think some of the building projects are the As and some of them are question marks. So we need to pick some. And if you wanna move forward with an A project, maybe have Jessica do some bidding and get some pricing.
I think we can have a separate meeting on capital because we got a lot of stuff we gotta talk about there. Maybe not for this year, but that's coming up between the jail finishing off that part. I think we're gonna end up having to do something at the juvenile center. I don't know what direction they're headed for sure. That place is not up to date. The old jail.
The old jails bothers me the most.
Trying to get something for the courts. I know they've been wanting a bigger courtroom. Everybody wants more room. Kristen could probably fit a couple people up there in her office.
Yeah, let's fit a few more.
Just put them in the corner, right next to Jen.
Something to think about too is currently there's five million in next year's budget in capital in general fund. So in one-twenty-seven, we have an additional five set aside for capital projects. And I think if you added together the Bs and Cs on the list, we're probably fourteen million in capital projects. And that's an estimate.
So it's all about the master plan and what you guys, what direction you wanna take us into as far as what projects first?
And I think we need to start ticking off some of the items because the list is only growing. So we need to start.
Well, like on Carnegie, you've got basement remodel. We're doing that, the stair replacement. We, we had, we were going to do that. So, I mean, those, those are two givens.
Yeah. So I think those two will be encumbered before the end of the year and carried forward. So, yes.
So, yeah, and some of those, desk and chairs.
Well, and I think you need to take a look at the entire list and make sure we do them in the right order. You don't want to spend a large chunk of money doing something that if you're gonna move people around or change things around, it's not gonna work after the change. So you want to make sure that you're strategically looking at the changes and what order they should happen in. Is there anything on the list you want more information from a particular department about?
And the timing of trying to get these projects bid out, done and completed is always an issue. And right now, we're having our own problems getting people to bid on our projects. So that's everywhere, I believe. Either no workers or too many jobs and not enough workers.
And it does take some time to get that bidding process done. So if there's items that Jessica can work on now to get moving quickly, that would be helpful.
See, we don't have the elephant on the list, right?
Right.
My definition of the elephant is what sits behind the courthouse. And, and phase one of the elephant is.
Demolition.
Or restoration, saving of facade, whatever. Maybe, it may be just swipe it away.
I don't think there's any way to save it. I.
Talk about what, where do you see that building going? Do you want more courts? Do you want, is this for courts? Do you want, it's all about that.
Yeah. I mean, if, if we, if we moved a courtroom somewhere besides that footprint, it would, it would double the security cost. So I, I think it makes sense to have the courts with one door.
Yes.
ADA door.
Yes.
Right? With a nice foyer where people could come in and there's the, what do you call that little?
Kiosk.
Kiosk there. Hey, I need, I need to see Judge X or I'm spoilt. And right now, it's helter-skelter.
And you put public restrooms, you put elevators that will hold a cot. You, I mean, it.
So if all of you agree that that is a priority, is that something we should start?
Architect.
Yeah, an architect or someone to tell us what the options are.
I think we've already been there a couple years ago, right? And it's just started, it's, it's on the shelf.
Right. Is that still the plan?
Well, I, I don't, I think it has to be revisited before it's, it's the plan. Because that thing had two buildings adjacent to one another with about four levels in each and neither, no level met with another level. It was.
That was one of the hazards to meet, but there was, yeah.
Which added a lot of cost.
Yes, most definitely.
That was to take the, this building and make, you know, the existing backside, north side and tie those things together. Well, then, all the tying together, maybe it's easier not to have to tie it together, start over.
It wasn't all floors, is what I understood. It was some.
Right.
Well, so the courthouse is interesting in that their basement is kind of half underground, half not. So the floors in this building and the floors in the jail do not meet the floors in the courthouse.
True. And we have an ADA ramp here that ends at a stair landing where you either take a wheelchair upstairs or a wheelchair downstairs.
You got a building that was built in the eighteen eighties that is, is not.
But to take a ramp and end it at a landing rather than a floor level, boggles my imagination.
Well, we had it even going downstairs. We have the, you got on a little lift thing and you went downstairs from the stairs, you know, so.
But, you know, I watched Aaron's take down the back part of the Old Pennies and they did it very quickly. And, you know, it, it was, I guess it was added on later, but the backside, you know, is all enclosed and everything now. So, you know, my, my thing would be, let's take it down first and then let's look at, at the plans that, that we've had before, maybe modify them or, or come up with some new.
Let's schedule a meeting to talk about that because that can be a, we can spend quite a bit of time discussing that. I mean, it's, if you take that down, are you gonna keep the.
Sallyport?
Sallyport. I mean.
Is, is there, is there a, a definition of a Sallyport that says a front door and a back door?
No.
There isn't?
No. Yeah, I mean, it would be better if it was a drive-through.
Right.
By all means, but it doesn't have, it's like right now, it works for our detention area.
Okay. I mean, even in the movie, The Green Mile, their Sallyport was a fence, but it had a front gate and a back gate.
Yep.
We've just got a front gate.
It is, it would be a whole lot easier if it was a full straight in.
Right.
If, if we could make it that way.
So do you guys wanna pick a date to have that discussion?
I think we need to.
Maybe not on a Tuesday?
Not on a Tuesday.
No, no.
We need to keep it on the calendar and almost talk about it either monthly or bi-monthly or, or something to keep it, keep it moving. It's, there's so many options is the bad thing. It's a good thing too.
Let's, let's schedule an initial meeting and invite courthouse personnel or whoever that means, the presiding judge and whoever he thinks should be here and the sheriff. The users of.
I would appreciate it.
That building?
I mean, we, we could invite the treasurer and the public administrator, although what, what they want and what they need and what they should have, it probably is not dependent upon.
I don't think we're there yet.
So.
So do you wanna try like next Thursday? You wanna?
Are we talking in January? And what are we talking?
I'd rather it be a, a new year.
Yeah, I think, I think let's get this up, get the budget done.
And not on Tuesday, the regular meeting, but maybe January thirteenth, which is a Thursday.
I don't care if we do it on a Tuesday, do it in the afternoon or something. We can have a meeting in the morning and then come back in the afternoon.
Yeah.
Something. I just don't want it to be a six-hour meeting and us angry. You know how Sam gets.
The eleventh in the afternoon?
That's, any, any of those days work for me.
Well, we'll schedule it for the eleventh. Then we'll schedule it at one-thirty. And if you can think of anybody else, I'll give you a list of the powers to be that maybe we should send you to and.
Everyone's invited, but some are especially invited.
Yes. But if there's a conflict, I'll let you know.
Okay.
Yeah.
And maybe we even put an ending time on it so we just don't sit and blab. Maybe it's one-thirty to.
Three-thirty.
Yeah, I've got a board meeting at four, so if we can.
Let's go one-thirty to three, make it an hour and a half meeting. It's gonna be crispy.
And just take all the chairs out of here. So that way everybody's gotta stand and they won't be just sitting around.
Turn the key way up.
Take one wheel off.
So.
So back to the list you have here. I mean, like I said, in the past, we have not approved individual items at this point. Normally, we make them come back with some sort of bid or the ask to bid, the particular items they have on the list. They have to bring you a quote or a bid. And then they ask to spend. So if that's the way you.
Sure.
Last, last.
Would like to continue, we can leave it the way it is, or if you want to change around the numbers that I have, I'm okay with that too.
Well, I'm looking at the courts. I think some of that needs to be done, you know. Again, it's not, but.
I think everything on the list, other than the building projects, are items that most people are wanting next year.
Okay. You got a lot of chairs and furniture. You've got a lot of chairs and furniture and...
One you may want to think about is Public Works is asking to replace the fueling system. We have talked in the past about possibly charging the departments an additional five cents more gallon or something and kind of creating a replacement fund for that, because it is used by everyone. I think you could also use capital improvement for that and, and not make it a Public Works issue, so...
What kind of price tag do they have on that? I don't remember talking about...
Seventy-one thousand.
Eighty thousand or something like that.
So, John's opinion on this, and I, and I am completely a hundred percent for it, is doing a five, a five cent per gallon deal. But I think that you buy the new system out of capital improvements, but then you take that five cents and that's what you use for the upkeep, for the inspections, for the filters. If someone by chance drives off with the nozzle in their vehicle, which my guys have done a few times, and I can give you names. But anyway, and there's also a very nice video. But anyway, when those, when those things have to be replaced, you know, it'd be nice if they had a, a fund to be able to go through versus them trying to find it inside their budget. I don't think that's fair on their part. So, I mean, I'm one of the bigger users, so I'm, I'm, I'm gonna get hit with this more than anybody else. But I was actually looking at our budget yesterday on how much we put in our fuel, and she, we did go up on fuel, but I still think there's enough there to be able to do the five cents and still be good this year.
So that's one we can talk about. I mean, I think it would have to be some sort of internal service fund on our side. So, a little bit of setup to get that to work.
Once it's set up, it would be sort of automatic.
Right, right.
And, and we are convinced, I guess I have to ask this question here once in a while, that it's, it's best for the county to have a fueling station four miles south of town or whatever it is, as opposed to pulling in a local station with a P card and...
Is it...
Money state.
Speaker from the Sheriff's Department, is it the best way to do it? Probably not. Is it probably the cheapest way to do it? Yes.
Okay.
And more importantly, is it the safest way to do it? Yes. Now, I'm gonna have about four deputies hitting me in the back of the head coming this afternoon, really watch this, but you start, I don't know, I think that you start spreading out like that, and then you have to worry about credit cards or charges and who's gonna be open at three in the morning, who's not gonna be open at three in the morning, and all that kind of stuff.
We did, I think Jessica can give you some more information here. We did look last year at going to a state fuel card versus what we were currently paying. The, the difference in price was significant.
The current arrangement's better?
Yes.
Okay.
So, just like in the courthouse portion of Sales Tax, Road and Bridges portion will have two departments next year as well. One for Sales Tax G, one's for Sales Tax H. This is one where Eric proposes the projects that he wants to see for next year, but we really are kind of waiting until the very end of the year to see which projects are still open, which ones will carry forward, 'cause that could adjust which projects he has the funding for and which ones he doesn't. So, we usually have a meeting as close to the 31st as we can to see where that cash forward is and to see which projects still have open purchase orders. Those are all put in first, and then if there's a difference, we, we make it up with whichever project he decides is one that can wait. Or maybe it's the fact that we have additional funding and he has an additional project he wants to add. He did go over those projects that are included. Sorry, your book doesn't include them, but up on the screen they do, so if you wanna know which ones they are, I can go back through them.
I may have to write telescope.
There aren't many in the old Sales Tax, so they have some stormwater improvements to Northport. They have lush road improvements. The, the final amounts on Business 50, which that's one, that's the one that's kind of up in the air as to where, where that one's gonna land at the end of the year. We have a little bit in Villages that we didn't spend from the five years, that's in there for next year. Again, a little bit in resurfacing, and I actually think part of that, he has some additional costs on Northport he'd like to include, so if we come out better than we think he's going to add to that. But those are really the ones in the old Sales Tax. And anything that he currently is working on that's still open at the end of the year. So, if there are projects that are currently in, in construction, they will carry forward. And then, in the new Sales Tax, he has Hem Street Bridge removal, Hickory Hill gravel road upgrade, Southberks Phase Three, Lakewood Stormwater, and then Tanner Bridge Road Phase Five safety improvements, and Rainbow Drive sidewalk construction. And then his normal Villages and resurfacing amounts, and then some miscellaneous stormwater. So if you have any questions you want us to send to Eric or anything you want to know about that, that's, that's about all I know. So, that's the first run-through of the book. That's everything besides salaries. I'm going to kind of switch over here. Grab a spreadsheet of salaries and pull it up instead.
Can you figure out some way to enlarge that?
Sorry.
You can pull it up on your computer.
So, I did, after the state put out what they were doing with salaries, I did go through and, in the four main departments excluding EMS, 'cause their salaries are a little bit different, I went through and did what, a half percent, one, a two, a three, a four, a five, and even a six would cost in each fund. And then also calculated what the additional benefits on that would be. So you can play with this. Right now, the budget includes a four percent. If you wanted to add an additional one, we can take that four plus the one with benefits, would be an additional almost $150,000 to add another one percent to those four funds. EMS is a little more tricky when it comes to deciding that percentage. They currently, right now, have those built-in steps, so they don't truly get COLA like the rest of us do. Their step kind of includes some of that. And their steps vary between positions, what that percentage increase is. So, if you have a new paramedic, their first step is over four and a half percent automatic the first year, no matter if it's this year or a different year. So, theirs is a little harder to, to determine.
Keep what the rest of the county...
So, they have this salary schedule.
Yep.
When we adopt a COLA, that doesn't change that schedule?
No.
It's built into their step phases, because they get a step every year.
So, it was supposed to be a three-year look back and then move the whole scale after we do a three-year evaluation of where the market went. This year would have been that third year, but with Eric being new, we kind of decided to give him a year to, to really evaluate where they're at and then next year.
Probably be good to look at that and let him take a look at and really get a feel for it. I mean, it wasn't a bad plan, because it, it was kind of front-loaded to get him to stay for a year, two years, and in the middle, it kind of tapers off. So, you're getting a little more upfront, but then in, there's other years that they weren't getting as much possibly as what the rest of the county COLA is. But then it's also back-loaded to try to get him to stay, you know, six, seven, eight years, and that's the theory, is that once you have that long, a lot of times they'll stick with us, so it's worth trying. We can see what Eric thinks. And I think next year, you know, let him get his feet kind of dug in and...
Going back to the last two years, comparing what they got compared to the percentage that we took was definitely different.
Okay.
Really going up one percent isn't as much as what I thought it would be.
For, for the different funds or for total?
Well, you said one fifty, a hundred and fifty thousand takes care...
For those four funds, yes.
And the four funds are?
General Fund, Law Enforcement, Public Works, and Assessor. So, General Fund includes Auditor, Collector, Treasurer, Commission, all of those.
You just talked about everybody except EMS?
EMS, yes.
Yeah.
Okay. For a hundred and fifty?
Hundred and fifty is a one percent.
I expected a bigger number.
I did, too.
No, because your four, your four percent's only 594.
Okay. Yeah, I think back...
And just the three benefits that are affected, of just the retirements and the Social Security.
We just kind of used the three percent.
It doesn't change health?
No.
No, your health insurance is set dollar amount for present.
It does change...
Social Security, Loggers, and SURF.
Yes. Which is a, what kind, is it like a 10%, 11%?
It's more like 15, 18.
18.
18 percent.
So the, those three, if you, we don't call them really fringes, because Social Security, you know, is not really fringe.
Right.
But those, those, those add to 18, and then SURF, I'm sorry, Health is sort of a fixed number, no matter what your salary is, so, okay.
Right. So all of our full-time employees, we have in there unless you've opted out of it as a set dollar amount for your health insurance.
And we know what that's gonna be next year.
We do. It will change slightly with open enrollment numbers. I haven't updated those that have chosen to add dependents or whatever, but...
And SURF does keep increasing every year, because as older people, as we retire, you will pick up new people that you will have to pay the four percent on. Currently not paying the four percent on some of those.
And I would say that the fund that's seen that the most at the moment is Public Works. We're down to very few in General Fund that that's making a difference on, but Public Works still has quite a few, I would say.
And we, we do get refunds there, so it kind of helps offset the four percent, too.
If somebody had the, the goal of matching the state at 5.5, it would be another $225,000 on top of what you already have.
Yeah, the 148 plus an additional 62, so 211, 566.
211, 566.
Guess they did five and a half. Was it five and a half?
5.5.
Yep.
My understanding is the employees are gonna have a raise of 2% on January 1. That was from the last session. They passed it, but they made it effective not on July 1, but January 1. Okay. Governor Parsons, my understanding, is saying it should be 5.5 increased in a supplemental and carried forward through the next fiscal year. So he's actually asking for it to be effective in February, the 5.5, on top of the two.
Yeah, that's what I heard.
So, my, just dreaming, if we said, "Let's keep pace with state government", it's 211, 566 for the state, or for the county to keep pace with the state government. 2, 211, 566, more than the 594 to get the 4%, right?
Right. I will tell you that I think most of our funds can handle that. Public Works is probably the one that's a little tighter than others.
Someday, we, we may get to where you say, "We can't do that because Fund X doesn't allow it", but I would probably fire back, "What's Fund X?" Well, it's, it's a, it's Nick and his person. Is that a fu, is that one of them?
They're not a fund by themselves.
Oh, they're under gen, okay. Well, but what's the...
So, most of the time, General Fund is the one that is the tightest.
Okay.
And it includes probably the most people besides the Sheriff's Department. So, because it has all those individual departments, you're picking up all of the smaller departments together in one fund.
So, there's no one little fund that could, could sort of veto?
The Assessor's Fund would be the smallest fund as far as employees, and it's only 12 unless you add more, so... And most of the time, theirs isn't necessarily the issue.
Okay.
So...
There's been years that we have been better than the state. I mean, so, I'll put that out there.
There's been years when 49 states have been better than this state.
But there were old years, when I, in the 80s and early 90s, that we couldn't keep up with what the state was doing.
Right.
So, I'll give you that.
Yeah, it's been back and forth. I don't know that we have to make this particular decision right this moment. I wanted you to have this in your mind before we talk about the, the additional employees.
Okay.
So, that's what I think kind of affects this is...
Right, so it's kind of a double-edged sword. We, do we take care of the people we have with additional money here? Or do we add additional people? Or do we do a mixture of both? I don't know. So, let's, I don't know that I need a yes or a no, but let's talk about some of the requests for additional people.
Well, I'd like to take care of our peoples.
I gotta...
So...
Cirque de clerk wants a part time.
No, I need a...
Public Works, I've got them running out of my len now.
So, let's...
They're adding them.
Yeah, so let's...
You have a list of...
I'm gonna go through what I have in there, and then I'll go through the ones that...
'Cause I was trying to keep the list to...
They requested beyond what I have.
Where's the keeper that was there? Hold on a second. You all wait, let's...
Let's take a quick break.
Stretch legs.
Okay, jumping jacks.
Do you find another cord? So, I guess this is mine that came with the computer, since we have a...
Docking station.
Yeah, docking station and office.
Do you carry that cord in here?
Yeah, I brought it in here. I just left it in here.
Well...
So you should have a cord.
How's your dockings? Well, I, I don't have another cord, I guess, that, I got a cord that goes in the docking station that powers the docking station.
So this cord powers the docking station otherwise? So I got this one from somewhere else then?
Well, I don't have that one.
No, I, I brought this one. I thought it came with my computer, and then I thought the docking station had its own plug-in. So, what Brian had was what I have here, probably.
There's two cords here.
I brought this one in here.
Chris used to plug his in.
There's two cords over there.
One's to the microphone, they listen in on whenever, the other one's turned off.
Oh, John. I thought you were bringing a bottle.
You like your shirt that I'm wearing?
Yeah.
I wanna return it.
It's got long enough sleeves for you.
It does, but I bought this like seven years ago in the button game, so I want a new shirt.
There should be extra buttons sewn at the tail of the...
I bought it from you. There should be some kind of award on it.
Here, here, I can fix it. Come on over here. I got, I got my stapler here.
Or go down to the ladies.
There was a, for those ladies down there. I would look like a button, and when I go down to their body stuff, I just say, "I need a patented shirt", and they just pick the colors out for me, 'cause they know. Well, they know, I don't have to...
That's sweet, though.
Oh, I don't know what I'm gonna do. I'm gonna look like a clown after they close down. I'll look like a... Oh, I don't know what I'm going to do. I'm going to look like a clown after they close down. I'll look like a freaking clown. And they don't raise your ankles anymore, damn it.
The tag man. Sam, I did text that to him. I, I screenshotted the email and texted it, and told him that he couldn't expand it, so.
Yeah.
I don't know why I can't.
Yeah.
It was just so much to retype into.
Oh, I hope, I know.
Hopefully, he can see it out loud, then I can let us know. His first question is going to be, do I really have a job?
A warrior.
Martin, how are you?
My what?
Your ability and you do what you do.
She has more patience than I did when I did that.
It's an amazing amount of.
At least the ones that know your mouth.
Yep, she has to retain.
Uh, no, they don't. They didn't.
She has a job.
You know it's kind of talking about.
Yeah. They're kind of like compounding ones.
There you go.
They wouldn't let me open it up and taste it before I called it.
Yep.
Awesome, thank you.
She's so glad, she's so glad.
Well, cause of the.
I hate this time of year.
There you go.
I figured it would be one of the, the challenges that you liked.
Nope. I'll take a not at any day over this.
No, the first couple of years, you loved it.
He's reading more into it than what was there.
I was like, thank God she loves it. The county clerk says that, so she might be one. I don't know. Two thousand, I, I just sent it to.
I had the amount. We need to know what it.
Oh, there's a copy of it.
Oh, yeah.
I don't really want to read it.
I'm going to be too, babe. Forgot about that.
What do you want to know about them?
Do they come in and do like a overhaul, or is it only at the branch?
I think you can come back.
Oh, what a deal. The troubles he goes through. He could just brought pie.
Vodka pie. He's frustrating.
Oh, yeah.
Today. Yeah, that, that, he didn't do it. I'm, I'm just, I'm just.
No, 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 about one pie, no.
Yeah.
Oh, goodness.
On your shirt?
Yeah, you got the button, you got the button?
Those buttons off. When I iron, I press it down real hard.
Oh, no, it's the purchase of the equipment.
I iron and press it.
Okay.
You all ready?
Yeah.
I'm still snacking. I'm still snacking.
Well, if the sheriff were to bring us vodka pie, lucky promise, but since he didn't.
All right, I'm just going to run through.
That shit take a second. Another one. We weren't ready yet.
Oh.
Like I finished my snacking.
Sorry, Dad. I'll pull this grab your lunch.
Okay.
Sorry. I forgot something from the new bakery. And it was really good.
Their bakeries are amazing.
It really was good.
Okay. Additional employee.
These are the changes beyond the four percent, so.
Where do I pull this up?
Um, you want to show Eric how to get to that file on your drive?
It's on the back of the drive under. Can I use this?
Yeah, it's, you can use. Is it pulling it?
She's got a separate one for EMS, but this is.
Okay, thank you.
Should I wait for Jeff to get back?
Yes, yes. Now, so I wait on maybe.
Is, uh, are we at the, uh?
General is the tab at the bottom we want to be on?
General.
Well, maybe you can find it for online.
Oh, this is, this is a.
Gosh, yours, I can't read that. I, I do have a telescope I can bring, but I don't think that would.
First one on the list is the sheriff's office. Is that?
Um, see down here, put it over here.
Here.
General.
Oh, I'm sorry, there it is. Okay. All right, now, let me blow this up. Okay, we're on the general tab.
Yep.
So, the first name there is.
Mine.
You.
I'm always the top of the list.
What list is the question, right?
We, we are in the first department, and my last name starts with B, so I am usually the top of the list.
Pretty much, huh? Okay.
Um, I'll wait for you. Yeah, don't look at that one now. That one's way too hard, Doug.
I think we can get through this first one pretty clear.
So, I'm going to kind of skip over the ones that are just a four percent, because there's not really any changes there, so.
So, we're getting all.
I'm going to hit on the departments that have changes.
First one I see is, is a, is adjustment a change, ADVA, or not?
So, it is. Um, that first one you're going to see is for the collector, but that's actually fees that he collects from the city for collecting taxes that go into his salary line. So, that one's an automatic adjustment based on an agreement for the collector. So, um, that one's not a new one. That's one that's in there every year.
Okay, so that, we go past that.
Yep, so the first department you're going to see changes to is one twenty-four, which is the public administrator.
Okay.
And we kind of talked when Ralph was in here, um, we're taking a part-time position to full-time. So, we're eliminating his part-time, um, and making that a full-time administrative assistant position. And then he wanted to see adjustments to his du- to deputy public administrators um, up to fit a little more into the salary schedule, so, um.
When you do that adjustment there, that includes, I mean, that's after the four percent for that, for that line, or that box.
In all the ones you're going to see, I took the COLA first, and then I'm doing the adjustment.
To get to the proposed.
To the proposed.
Got it.
Um, there are a few that just asked for a flat dollar amount adjustment, not a particular salary. In some of those cases, it was just the flat dollar. But, um, in this circumstance, he was asking that they go to a proposed salary. Um, my adjustments here are a little bit smaller than what Ralph requested. Um, he wanted them to go a little higher than what is here, and he also wanted to give an adjustment to his chief deputy public administrator.
So, the, these adjustments don't, uh, agree to his request.
Correct. Um, it's some, but not all.
Right.
So, I don't know if you just want me to go through them all, so you guys kind of have an idea, and then we can come back and talk about them individually, so you can see all the ones.
Yeah, let's do that, so we have public administrator has two adjustments.
Okay.
Um, recorder doesn't show anything new, but, um, her request was that the position that is being funded by her recorder's trust fund at the moment be fully funded by the county. Um, and I did include that cost in there. So, she had an agreement right now where she was paying the salary and we were paying the benefits. Um, I incorporated that whole person into the county budget without that reimbursement, so. Um, there is one in information systems for, um, the information systems technologist. That was requested by Brian.
Okay.
Um, the one you see in one thirty-one is that adjustment to fifteen dollars an hour. That's the first person you're going to see that was under the fifteen. Um, that adjustment gets that employee up to thirty-one, too, which is fifteen dollars an hour.
Okay.
Next one is the health department. Um, she had two sets of adjustments. One was for her, um, front office staff, so the clinic clerks that sit out front and deal with the public. Um, she also had some adjustments to the environmental specialists. Um, one that came in under, just because he was here before and has the qualification, she wanted to move him up. Um, she actually has two of those. One's a little less than the other as far as the adjustment. And then, um, she had one, two. Two employees that were under the fifteen, so you'll see those two adjustments as well. Um, next on the list is juvenile. Um, she had two front office staff, so her receptionist and her office manager. Um, she did away with a, I think. They had a third person that did like that office stuff. She divided the duties and gave it to these two and is not replacing that person.
So, there's a net savings there.
Um, there is, um, but sh- in the process, she also took a part-time legal assistant and made it full-time. She did that in October.
All right.
So, yes and no.
And they had one person under fifteen.
Yes, their cook was under the fifteen, so he has an adjustment to get him there. Um, nothing there, nothing there. Um, prosecutor, even though it's nothing new, we did have the one, um, assistant prosecutor that was removed. And then we had one full-time person that took a significant salary increase, and then he added a part-time prosecuting attorney. So, you're seeing some adjustments there, but they're not clear on here. You see, he lost a position and reallocated that funding to part-time and one employee. Um, he did have some additional adjustment requests. I never did get it by person.
Is that that seventy-five?
Yes. So, I don't, I don't have that breakdown, and it was not included in the budget.
Okay.
Um, next one where you see something new is the parks supervisor. That's the one requested for parks at the forty-two thousand. Um, there's also a part-time position in parks requested that you don't see on this sheet, because this is only full-time employees.
Now, did we, did we skip to a different tab there for that, or?
Nope, down at the bottom of your department, one seventy-two.
Oh, okay, I see. Yeah, got it, got it.
And that's all the ones I included in general fund. We're going to skip to public works at the moment. So, skip over law enforcement for a minute, and we're going to do. We're going to skip public, to public works. Um, let me get rid of these here for a minute.
What's the extra stip- oh, I see what it is. Never mind. It's two.
Yep, um, so theirs only includes the four percent, but, um, when they originally proposed the budget, they wanted to take the person that retired that was at a higher salary and fill that with two lower salaried people. So, you see an open and a new, and then they have an additional open one just in general. So, taking a sixty-four, I mean, somewhere right in there, sixty-four thousand dollar employee and creating two thirty-one thousand dollar employees. Um, and then he had, um, a handful of other adjustments that he wanted. I did not include the other adjustments, because at one point he decided, oh, I don't need that new person. We're just going to fill with one, not two, but we had an extensive list of people that he wanted to adjust.
So, when you remove a sixty-four, does that include the benefits, or is that just the salary?
So, in that circumstance, the, the percentage amounts would have been the same to add to, but you would have added a full amount of health insurance to add another person.
So, adding two of them at thirty-one or thirty-two is really going to, it's going to be more than that sixty-four?
Yes, yes.
So, it's, okay, just making sure.
And we'll pull Eric's list when you want to see what he's requesting different from mine. So, I did not include any adjustments, but I have that new position in there. He kind of flip-flopped on me in the middle and decided he didn't want to do the new position, but wanted to add salary adjustments. So, we'll come back to that one. Um, assessor asked for two additional. I did not include the two additional. So, if you guys decide you want to do that, we.
But as we sort of left that yesterday, they're there for the asking when you find the.
So, yes, we will have to, that's something different than normal, so we'll have to tell them that. We're not going to put the money in your salary line until you bring us a person to fill them at the correct salary.
Yeah, we had told him that five years ago when he was looking for his commercial appraisal.
You, you may well have, but I'm not sure that was what was heard or remembered.
So, on the assessment fund, the amount of money that comes from the assessment fund to fund the assessor's office, it's based on.
He gets a per.
Parcels.
Yep, he gets X dollars per parcel.
So, the state tax commission doesn't, they just take that, and that's kind of how they're figuring out how many people he should have.
And then he also receives a fee from the city for their assessments.
Does that come to him or it come to the office?
Comes to the office.
To the office.
And that was same thing with the collector, that comes to the office?
Um, so collector collects way more fees than that, but part of the agreement is that he gets an additional three thousand dollars as far as collecting those fees for them. So, the agreement for fees for the collector is different.
It's a little different, okay.
Yes, yes. Um, and then the assessor gets a commission from property taxes as well. So, you'll see a tax amount in there. So, those are his three sources of funding.
Well, now, when you say him, or are you saying his, oh, okay, there's, there's.
Not him.
Got it.
Not him.
But the assessment fund is based on number of parcels, and they're saying, basically, this is what it's going to cost you all to take care of this many parcels.
So, his per parcel amount is not as significant as his commission amount that he gets on your tax bill. So, the bulk of his money comes from.
No, don't say his, say the office.
The assessor's office money, fund, the assessment fund money, comes from a commission on property tax bills.
Okay. And the state tax commission counts the, or has turned in the number of parcels times four dollars and ninety-two cents or some number like that, and that they send money to the assessment fund.
Yes.
And that assessment fund, is that a, a million-dollar fund?
Um, their total fund at the moment's two point five.
And growing?
Um, yes, it has grown. He's going to grow about a hundred and fifty thousand this year.
Why, why?
Um, I think some of that is open positions. He always has open positions. We budget them all to be full. He has open ones throughout the year. Um.
Was this year the first time that he's been fully staffed? Cause I, I didn't remember, but y'all said he was fully staffed.
And I don't think it was for maybe about a couple of months.
I always thought we had open positions, and that was part of my.
And I, he has one.
Let's get these positions.
He has one open at the moment, so.
Is it typical for a county assessor fund to have enough money to pay? Is it typical for a county assessor fund to have enough money to pay the salaries for the next four years?
When I first started here, general fund was subsidizing the assessment fund.
So the answer is no?
No.
Well, it was not typical for us. But today, the county of Cole assessor fund has two.
Well, the total budget will be two-point-five, but one-point-four of that is a carry-forward.
Okay, one-point-four.
Yep.
There was, there was stipulations that changed within the, either the one percent or the, the state funding amount that let that increase. And non-spending also let that increase.
And my question is, is that normal, typical, average, or are we a, an outlier?
I do not.
Or?
I think we are an outlier. I, I think there are still counties that help fund their assessment fund. And we had multiple years where we were spending more than we were bringing in due to the Ameren case. We had, I mean, we had a significant amount of money where we were fighting.
So when, when the attorneys for that were sending bills to us and we were paying X percent of it, we being the big.
The county.
The county. Was that being paid out of the assessment fund?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So he does have some.
Not he.
His fund does need some sort of reserve for those types of situations.
Got it.
Because they, they arise at different times and it's different entities.
I, I'd just like to know if we could be criticized for squeezing uh his expenditures while this fund is growing and it's enormous.
Most of the time, it, we have stayed about a million dollars is his reserve and.
Not his.
The assessment fund's reserve.
And it really is your fund? It's been determined it is your fund?
Well, I know he lost the case and he got hammered by Western District after he lost it at the circuit level. When, was that back in twelve or thirteen or fourteen?
So we've been trying to hold about a million dollars.
Okay, fair enough.
But due to open positions, it is flexing out.
Okay.
So, in that particular fund, the decision is that we will fund two additional people. I think you need to specify what salaries you want to fund them at.
And his request was thirty-four or thirty-two? If I got that right?
I think it depends on the person, because if we bring somebody in that can actually do appraisals, and I would really like to see us get a commercial appraiser on staff.
So that's the concern, is that's not one of the positions he's requesting at the moment.
Well, he may not be able to find anybody.
I wanna be on record that if he finds a um, a um.
General certified?
No, I'm going something, if he finds a, a star, of somebody who, he or she is, hey, this is the answer. I wouldn't limit him to thirty-two, thirty-four. What does it take to, to, to hire somebody who can, can tangle with the other side? And has got the, probably a few extra initials behind their name, some certifications.
But in that circumstance, he needs to bring that person to you before he makes an offer of employment?
Yes, and he, we just need to go back and forth. What's, you know, what have you found so far? Nothing, well, maybe we need to raise that offer or advertise a higher range. I'm open to um helping cure the, the problem.
Okay.
So are you guys okay? I mean, we can finish that one. Sixty-six thousand, put in contingency to, as a place marker.
Yeah, I, yes. Yes, it's sort of a, it's, but he's gotta ask, he's gotta be ready to make the offer. And before he makes the offer, he says, can I make the offer at this price? And we say, go for it. That, that's me speaking. Okay?
I'm gonna change this note and then.
I think it's probably more important on the commercial side, because that's where we get more requests for the BOE.
And it's also the one that they have more firepower on their side. They go out and hire, uh, you know, the commercial folks can go out and hire an attorney, somebody with lots of initials behind their name and.
You know, DevNet, you plug numbers in there and it does your comparisons, subtracts, adds, does whatever is. Some of it can be done, I mean, I've done it in real estate. I've put the numbers in there and you just have spots where you have to pull things out. Marshall and Swift is very reputable on how they make adjustments for things, too, so. I mean, you can get a pretty good idea with those, but the commercial, that's a, you know, there's so many different ways, well, there are three different ways to come to a value. You know, you can, it's a cost approach.
The income, the income approaches can vary so much.
Yeah.
So I want you to look, though, if you take the cash forward and contingency out, he really only has about twenty-seven thousand. His fund only has twenty-seven thousand, six-hundred-and-eighty dollars in the black. So if you add these two positions, you are going to create a deficit in his fund by the difference.
But if we would add a commercial, we would be able to remove the contracted. Because that's what we're using notes for, correct?
Yes, so right now, there's only twenty thousand in there, which we need to increase with the two new.
Two new cases going to this tax commission, is that?
Was that two?
Oh, yeah. There's that, and then there's also that this person, in a sense, can sort of pay their way, because an assessment that has been established by a new, new employee and it's a, it's a higher assessment than was previously there, results in more revenue be, when those folks pay, doesn't it? And you say that the assessor gets office, gets uh the lion's share of their revenue based upon the s, the commission? The commission would increase.
It's just half percent or one percent?
It's a funky formula. It's so much percent up to X dollars of assessed valuation, then it drops to.
Oh, yeah, it's a, it's a.
Yeah, it's a sliding.
De-escalating.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, but the previous one I did, commercial, was also the chief deputy and had supervisory role, so we could get somebody and let them focus on commercial and.
I think you just are going to have to make it clear that the goal is to eliminate that contract. Otherwise, you will be spending down his reserve at about a sixty-six thousand dollar amount per year.
But it would take twenty years to get rid of it.
As long as you don't have another Ameren case or something where we're taking the reserve to pay that.
Well, yeah, and we could, we, maybe at some point, this, this is not the time to discuss it, but I, I found it a little confusing as to why this building or this organization was paying uh legal fees for political subdivisions, basically, that would get eighty-five, ninety, ninety-five percent of the proceeds. Why wasn't, why weren't those?
They did have an arrangement at the beginning. They were paying part of it, but then as the case went on, we didn't re-approach them to any of it, to the thing. So, no, we paid the majority of the cost, yes. But we did go back to some of the schools, but it was not near what they were reaping to gain from that compared to what we were.
So that's all we went to them, because they were the ones that were getting a lion's share of the money coming in for it. But at the same time, I feel like it's, it's our job to defend our valuation of it. And if, if we didn't defend that one at all, this would have snowballed. Everybody would came in and said, well, you know, if we fight it hard enough and come to it, then we'll get it reduced.
Well, not everybody would, I mean, maybe every utility would have or uh that, that branch of the, of economy.
Big box stores around here in the desert.
Right, and, and tho, those two that are going to the state tax commission is, or?
The two new ones that we just signed are both hotels.
Hotels, okay.
One other thing we didn't talk about and he didn't mention either. He had five thousand dollars for office equipment and furniture, but I never saw a list or items that he wanted to purchase out of there.
But in capital or in?
He has a line in his budget for five thousand dollars.
His capital usually, because he's a separate fund himself, just like the sheriff's department, just like public works, a lot of them pay their own capital out of them.
Is that what we usually leave in there, is like a five thousand kind of placeholder on that?
Usually he.
Twelve thousand for twenty-one?
Yeah, twelve thousand was to replace his computer. So like last year, I worked with Brian and that was um to replace their computers in their office, so they were on their, their cycle of replacement for computers. The year before that, it looks like he replaced the copier. So normally, we get some sort of.
What if, if you would ask the office to identify what the five thousand would be for? It could stay without an identification, it would go?
Okay.
Is that fair? Okay.
So back to the spreadsheet, let's do law enforcement.
Oh, yeah. Motion to adjourn. Just kidding, I read through all the motion.
So I did not add any positions in the sheriff's department. And that's the bulk of his requested changes that we still have left on the list. Right now, it's just the four percent for his current employees. Oh, yeah, we, yeah. So his request is currently a new SRO, which will be partially funded. A new jail detective and a new lieutenant that will be in charge of professional standards. He also has a request for a four percent increase for his part-time and a one percent merit. So, let's do this.
So those don't show up here?
Um, I did not include them, so they're not in the numbers at the moment. They would all be additions to the current amount.
Everything I put on my paper is changes to the budget that Kristin put up.
Okay.
So um his budget, we have been spending down his reserves with his capital purchases. So if I take out his cash forward and his contingency. And we've made some other changes since then. I should be off by a negative amount of the capital improvements, but we have made some changes to other things already. So that difference is. So he has about a two-hundred-thousand-dollar savings with the changes that have been made already. I don't think it comes out exactly to that. It's two-oh-one-eight-eighteen. Huh, stop it. Stop it.
A lot of it is the sales tax increase?
Yep, so we adjusted sales tax, we adjusted um his admin fee, we adjusted the surplus property, the federal prisoners, the nine-one-one.
So this, this net number that you're announcing right now uh versus the number that I'm looking at on page, what? One?
It would be.
It's like one-oh-eight, one-oh.
Well, so then, the net in the book's going to be zero, because we present a balanced budget. But normally, he has a deficit built into his budget for his capital improvements. We're spending down his reserves with capital items. So the six-hundred-and-forty-two-thousand-two-sixteen that he has in his capital improvement line would be his deficit this year.
Okay, alright.
Right now, it shows four-forty-three-ninety-eight because of the other changes we've already made.
Okay.
So he has about a two-hundred-thousand-dollar savings at the moment with the other changes we have made. So if you want to use that savings to add employees or change the percentage of COLA or do a merit, those are the decisions we need to make at this point.
What does another one-and-a-half percent COLA cost him? Cost that office?
So one-and-a-half percent in law enforcement would be sixty-thousand-six-ninety-six. Oh, that's without benefits, sorry. Seventy-one thousand.
Plus eighteen percent on top of that.
Yeah, seventy-one thousand-seven-twelve. And that's based on total salary. Some of that, um, I guess we do need to talk about the sheriff's salary as well. Are you guys implementing the change to the sheriff's salary?
No, we're suing.
Twenty-twenty-two? It is currently in there. I have included.
The, the statutory number is in there.
Yes. So I do know there is lawsuit.
Yes.
And I have warned the sheriff as well, that if it does get paid out to him, to be careful if something would happen with the lawsuit and it has to be paid back.
If it has to be paid back?
Yeah.
Are other counties going ahead and paying it?
It's about a fifty-fifty split.
I mean, are some counties saying, no, and we're not paying?
Yes, there are some counties that are saying, no, they're not paying it.
I would pay it.
It's the law.
Yeah.
Currently, the law.
Yeah.
So how they, to get by, by not paying it, I'm not sure how.
I, I don't either. I mean, I think in the long run, the law says you had to do it, you should have done it. I mean, I think they're gonna be the ones paying it back. They should be escrowing at that point to be like, hey, it's here, we're just not gonna release it, I mean, but.
So you're saying that I have, I'm sorry. Can we still talk about this stuff?
Yeah.
Young South, you wouldn't have done that. If you take it away, that means I got my money, do what I want. But anyway, so we're looking at right now about two-hundred thousand, is that what we're looking at?
It's two-oh-one-eight-something.
I think my numbers are right, though, but anyway.
Two-oh-one-eight-eighteen.
I would, I would, I would remove the jail detective position and that would keep me at about a hundred-and-eighty-two thousand. So I'd still be about eighty-thousand dollars in black.
So I like getting an additional person for, you know, half the price of the SRO.
Yeah, I'd do too.
I like that one as much as anything. And then that's, that's what's gonna. I like that one as much as anything. And then that's, that's what I was going to kind of ask you if you had to pick which one of the other ones.
It'd be the jail detective would be my lowest priority. I mean, I think it would be very beneficial. I think it, it's already, because when we first started this position, when they came to me, this was a, we didn't even come to you guys. But they decided to make the change of position there. And then I said, if it works in three months, then we'll go to you guys and-
Y'all had somebody that you just turned into the jail detective essentially and-
And, but now, since last year, you, I mean, we moved them up to the, where they had a stipend and they're full of tech now. And they helped out immensely back in the jail, the different, uh, some of the uh, drugs that we find in there, the assaults that we have, the fake injuries that we have. They're, they're reviewing video all the time to, to be able to show if something's actually happening or someone's faking something, which I don't try to believe that happens in a jail. So it's, and it's also, you know, if, if we get a complaint, uh, those detectives are able to look at the, the video and turn it over to the supervisor. So it's, they sold me on it, uh, without a doubt. And I would like to have it, but if the money's not there, the money's not there.
So then my other argument was going to be to eliminate, you know, one of the, not eliminate a position, but you don't take a position and we're able to pay the, do a merit for some of the positions that you're having troubles filling if you're running into that, so.
I really think you guys are appreciating the 4% COLA for sure.
God knows we need it, but with my staff, I'm 15 down right now. So i- if I keep losing people, I mean, things are going to get real bad. So I have to do something to stop the bleed. The 4%, or 5%, whatever you guys go with, 10%, whatever you want to go with, is good. I don't know if you picked up on the 10% question, but anyway, is, is very good, but the merit is, is even more so. Uh, the merit, which I think is too low. Uh, I'd like to get it higher, but uh, the merit, it, it's something different for our staff. Remember, uh, we're unique, uh, unique animals when it comes to the, the county. We get judged uh for what we do at 3:00 in the morning, not only by our staff and by me, by the public and pretty much everybody in the world. It's hard enough to get people to come and apply for the Cole County Sheriff's Department. It's another thing to keep them here. Uh, we don't pay as much as agencies around us. And, and that's, and whenever JCPD gets their raise popped in, it's going to be more so. Capital Police even raised their salary. I don't want to get into a big race with another agency because we can't win. We, I don't have the, the money to win a fight like that. But what I would like to do is make it to where the staff that I have will stay with me. And then we can work harder on, I'm looking at a recruitment video, I'm looking at doing some other things to try to attract more to us. But we have to do, we, we have to do better with what I have. I gotta stop the bleed. And uh, one way to do that is the merit. The merit also is a positive influence to be able to, to, to get my staff to do what they're supposed to. They get, the merit is a, we get evaluations, we do them twice a year, uh, very serious about them. They're, so they're limited, even though if they get a, there's a 1% merit, that doesn't mean they're going to get a 1% merit. It depends on how they get evaluated. And we use how they are with customer service, uh, use of force complaints. You know, it's a plethora of things that we judge them on, that their supervisors judge them on. So I real feel, I feel strong about the 1%. I'd like to go 1.5. I'd really like to go 1.5. But it is just not in the funding.
So Kristen, you, you know, we were at 4%, now we're talking 5 or, or more than that. And you said like EMS is, is going to be a, a hard, could, could we, say we go to 5, could we give him 4% COLA? And then get, use that 1% for merit or?
I think if you're going to consider it a COLA, the COLA has to be-
Across the board.
Yeah.
Okay.
And if you do merit there, you have to look at other departments.
Okay.
I think that's my only concern with his request is the part-time increase and the merit raise are two things we're not doing in other departments at the moment. So we've tried to do as much as we can the same. Those are two things that currently aren't in there for anybody else.
So-
And, and I understand merit in his department. He has a larger staff and he does a good job with merit. We have run into problems in the past with merit dollars and how they're distributed and things like that, so.
And I understand what you're saying, and I know you want to be fair, and, and I'll go on the record again, saying that being a commissioner during budget time and the auditor sucks. But the fact of the matter is, we are different than other people. EMS is different. You all granted that last year whenever you gave them the holiday, the double, double time holiday stuff, when you did the step promotion. You've recognized that they are a different entity and they operate in a different manner. Therefore, you do things different for them. I'm the same way. The merit is different for me. I gotta have it. I need it. Because in other words, if I don't have the merit, then evaluations are nothing. And my staff spends a lot of time on these evaluations. And they mean nothing if we're not attaching some kind of a number. And 1% is a very minute number when it looks at one person. But it's the, it's, I don't want to say it's the thought of it, but it's the, the positive reinforcement that we're doing for my staff. So we, we really, I, I understand you want to be the same and you, and you want to look across the board. I get that. But just because there's a 1% merit doesn't mean all my staff is going to get a 1% raise. I don't work it that way. The merit with me is based on their evaluation. And not everybody gets a 5. Matter of fact, you have to write, to get perfect score, you have to write up, it even costs the supervisor even more because he has to write up justification on why that 5% is there. And if it's below a 3, they have to write justification on why it's below there. So we, we hold hard and fast to our evaluations. We have to have that. We are, we are a different entity than anybody else. And I'm not taking away from anybody. I'm not saying that public work shouldn't deserve it or anything like that. I'm talking about the Cole County Sheriff's Department. I have it in my budget. I need the, I need the 1%. I actually want 1.5, but I just don't see the numbers.
So I'd agree with you. It's, it's a different animal over there. We do things different in different areas, just like EMS.
Yes, sir.
So my thing would be what's, what's more important, having X amount of dollars for merit raises or additional positions? You know, do we try to keep who we have or do we add positions? As far as the merit thing too, we can, we can put the money in there, but we don't release it until we get the evaluations and make sure that it's not just, well, I'm just going to do it 1% across the board. And I don't think you've ever done it that way anyway, but I mean, we do have some control over that. So I mean, that's just something to consider if, if we do want to treat them different. Because we do treat other departments different, specifically EMS. So, and if we're going to do this, I want to do it now in budget time. I don't want to come back next April, June, July. Well, I'm still having troubles getting people. I need some money to pay these guys more to entice them to come to Cole County.
I gotta stop, I gotta stop the lead right now.
So I would much rather go that route than adding positions.
But, that's not the, I, I understand what you're saying, but it's not the same. Because the cost for a merit raise is $32,000, right? 32,375 is how much to, for a 1% merit raise, because not everybody gets a merit raise. You had to have, you have to be in a position, I think it's within six months before you can get, before you're eligible for a merit raise. So there'll be some that won't be eligible for a merit raise. So that's how it's different from COLA. And if you're talking, I mean, uh, the lieutenant position is $75,600. Now that's not a yearly rate, that's including benefits, but um, so I don't know how you can, I don't know how you can say that the, you either got to have the merit raise or the, uh, or the new positions because it's, the, the money is significantly different. You, you tell me how much money I can spend and I will, and I will make it work with my budget. But I'm just telling you, I, I need that merit.
I think you're going to have to just, I COLA to, to even give him that number. So if you decide you're changing the COLA amount, that will change his number. Because my understanding is if you give a COLA like that, we are giving the COLA to everyone at the same rate.
So, and if you end up going higher on the COLA, I don't want you, I don't want the county not to get a higher COLA because of me. So if you want to go to a higher COLA, you tell me how much money that is and I'll figure out on my priorities. I'll cut some more stuff off there if you want to.
Well, uh, but, but COLA is, is the same percent for everybody except-
Elections.
EMS, no.
EMS.
Oh yeah, sorry.
And theirs is because they have that built in.
Right, but, but they're, once again, they're different.
Yeah.
Okay, but this guy is different too because his competitors, the Jefferson City Police Department, the citizens just said by 80% margin, they need more money in the police department and fire department. And that's going to, that's, if they're honest, if the city administrators and officials and everyone else over there is honest and that flows through to them, your job just got tougher.
Oh yeah, and it's, and I supported the tax, sales tax, I still do. But I'm not only losing to JCPD, but I lost two uh, this past week to the state.
Okay, and they're, you know, the state's looking at 2% more and 5.5% more and, and maybe a better, I don't know.
You know, and another, another difference in how we operate is we're 24-hour, they're rotating shifts. They're, I mean, it just, I'm with you though.
Until, um, until I get stopped, my, my thought is, is, is to go for 5.5 on COLA. Could get talked out of that. Uh, I think it was general consensus that 4 was reasonable. But that was before we heard the governor speak this week. And uh, whether or not we get there, I, I'm, I'm with Jeff on uh, the things that he just said about, we, we need to do this, whatever, whatever merit there is, it has to be at the beginning of the year rather than through the year. And it's, because then that, that's when it starts to snowball.
So-
To other departments.
Other two, what's your thoughts on merit money, be, or on COLA? Because I think if we're going to change that COLA amount, I need to put that in the budget and see what that number looks like in each fund. As far as does that throw them one way or the other?
But uh, it, well, it can't, can it? 1.5% more? Is it, is it a tipping point? And, and what, what if it is? What, what if one department can't afford a merit? And they, there are 25 employees and we got 375 employees. Do we say, well, sorry, that little department over there stopped it for everybody?
It's not really a department, it's the funds.
It's the fund, so if you're-
But, but there were days, there were years when we pumped money into the assessors fund. We don't do that anymore. Why, why did we change?
Because their funding formula changed.
Okay, so what's to keep the county commission from pumping money into a fund?
No, jeopardizing general fund, because the only where you have to take it from is general fund.
Right.
Yes.
And, and that's not a good-
Because you can't steal from any other funding.
I understand, but what, but you can put it in, you can't maybe take it out.
Well, you're just setting, uh, setting yourself up, I guess. I don't know. If it's just for a one-time, one-time expense, but when you're talking about a salary, that is not a one-time expense.
You know what, I look, this is, is like a family with 10 kids and hey, kids, we're going to have a great Christmas. Wait a minute, wait a minute, Debbie was a bad girl. Nobody gets Christmas. Well, that's not right.
Well, we've never really done that.
Well-
So are you talking about the law enforcement fund? I mean, we've put 2 million into that already.
No, I, I was looking at it more from a, a 50,000 feet that, you know, i- if, if it was desirable to go to some kind of a, a COLA of X, but it ma, this one fund, it really stretched that fund to do it. Well, how do we fix that so that that one fund doesn't punish everybody else?
We're making adjustments instead of just giving them a flat amount of money, I think is the difference.
Okay.
And I, I understand, you know, that concept, that if in the sheriff's department you allow merit, you don't in others. Is that, is that the problem or is it the starting wage of those different positions?
I, I would say every department that competes with uh, the outside world and the outside world has just told their competitors that we're going to, that 80% of the population wants to raise uh, revenue to compete with that department, then they're like the sheriff. But no one else has done that.
No, for that market, maybe, I don't know about all the positions, but maybe the deputies that are out on the street versus, I don't know what the cities was. Was it the whole, the whole city?
No, no.
Police department or was it just the police officer?
Police and fire.
Police and fire, yeah.
Just the office.
Yeah, it's just, yeah.
Yeah, well, I mean, it, it could be their staff inside it, but it's, it's-
Jailers, I mean, they obviously don't have jail.
Right, but-
I, I understand. I understand the market, you know, that, that's what we have to compete with. And that makes them unique, that makes EMS unique.
A bit, yeah.
Yeah, I want to try to help John. I'm, I'm-
I just think it's mainly with the jailers, right?
No, it's deputies too. I'm, I'm three down in patrol division right now. So, I mean-
But you probably have jailers that would want to move up to that or not, or they're not qualified?
Number one, they got to get post-certified, which is about a three-month process. And then once they get, if they pass it, then it's another three months before I can, before they're even human beings, before I can put them on a schedule.
Right.
So-
But, I mean, the ones that are in patrol, that's probably, are not patrol, I'm sorry. Uh, in a jailer, that's not where they want to stay, obviously. They, they probably want to-
But you got to remember, I'm 12 down in the jail too, so.
Well, you're going to be 15 down when you move three up to patrol.
Well-
So that's what I'm thinking is, do you have more entry level that we want to entice and get them here and keep them here so that you can recruit, retain, train and move them up? And so that's kind of where I'm leaning. And you've got the pot of money, so I guess I'm kind of asking you, is it going to be better served to use them to try to make some salary adjustments or to add another jail detective?
Well, that's what I said, we could take the jail detective off, but um-
Uh, I thought you said the train, lieutenant?
No, lieutenant is, I want to keep the lieutenant.
Okay, so detective or the second detective?
So the top, the, I mean, we could keep the top three. If we need to, we can cut the SRO position. That's top 27.
I'm with Jeff there, I think.
I, I want to keep that position too.
I think, no, I think the SRO to me-
But if it comes down to where I don't have enough money, that's, the priorities are right on there. It's the lieutenant, the part-time salary increase and the merit raise, those are the top three.
I mean, I would think the health department employees would think they're unique right now too.
No, they are.
COVID and that too, so I just wanted to put that out there.
They are, they're very unique right now.
I guess I would like to possibly see if you want to change the COLA amount. Because I think that will determine the amount of funding remaining for John to decide what he can and cannot do to balance his budget back out.
Alright, first I'd prefer to stay at the 4%. I think it's very reasonable. Uh, we've had, like Debbie mentioned, we've had years where we were over what the state gave. So that's my reasoning for that. My mind can be changed on that. I, I don't, I don't disagree. I'd like to be able to keep up with the state. But can we, if, if John wanted to go 3% COLA and 1% merit or something, 3% and 2%?
But he, he can.
If you're doing a COLA, and I think if you ask Jill, she'll have the same opinion. If you're calling it a cost of living, it would have to go the same to all the employees.
And I think if you, if you started saying-
It doesn't, no, it doesn't.
Well-
We don't do it right now, so if it's illegal to do it, we've been breaking law for three years now.
I think what they're saying is, I think what they're saying is-
You guys adopted that, you guys adopted that plan that they had.
Did we adopt a plan for John?
You adopted the budget.
We adopted law enforcement budget in a different way like we did for EMS.
No, you approved that grid for EMS.
Right, we do the same thing for John. What's the difference doing it for a department versus an elective official?
You could, you could, but here, here's the deal.
Wait, wait, I can't.
You, you, whatever you want up there, I don't care, but here, but here's the deal.
Thank you, John.
I, I don't want to, to lower, uh, I, I want my people to get the same COLA as everybody else. What I'm saying is, you tell me what the COLA do you want. I will figure out how much money I have in surplus and then I will tell you my priorities on what I can and can't do. I, I don't, I, I'm not going to sit up there and say, you got to give me all my stuff or I'm going to, you know, get mad and storm out. I'm saying I'll work within the budget, but you just got to tell me the numbers you want. I, I believe I can get, I believe uh, the merit, the money is there for the merit. And I think I can, and I should be able to use the merit.
Okay, so then you're saying what I, what basically referring to, I'd rather do is say, here's your pot of money. Are you going to use it for positions? Are you going to use it for merit or a mixture thereof?
A mixture thereof.
And, well, and that would be for you to decide, but when you run out money, you run out money.
Absolutely.
But he can't say Joe gets 3% merit, Mary gets 2% merit, 3% COLA. Sam gets this for COLA and that for merit, you can't do that.
And the other thing to remember, Jeff, is, um, COLA...
No, I, I wasn't saying that, but for the whole sheriff's department, they can do a 4% COLA, 3% COLA, and 1% merit or whatever.
Well, yeah, but here, remember this too, uh, COLA goes to everybody, right? Everybody that's there gets COLA.
No, no. No, when we do a COLA, EMS does not get a COLA.
Now, I'm talking about my department.
Okay, all right, back to your department.
But if you want to go to EMS, we can talk about EMS. Last year, they, uh, we didn't get as high as, uh, increases they did, because of their step, we got 3%.
Well, it depends on which step they're on.
Yeah, but they still got 5%.
No, no, they, no, the first year they have, uh, 4.65 or a 5% step, then the second year's a little less, the third year's even less than 3%, I believe.
Well, which is...
And then fourth is...
No, it, it's at least 5%.
Well, I mean, we can go, we can argue that, but it's not over...
But what I'm saying is, uh, uh, we got less than what EMS did last year anyway, but I'm okay with that. Because that's what, that's what you guys set up, that's his budget. But with me, when you do a COLA for my department, that means everybody, all 115 employees except for the, uh, part-time, they all get that pay raise. Now, on a merit increase, only the people that's been there in the positions for more than six months.
And that's performed.
So that means those that's been in the positions for less than six months getting no merit. They're not eligible.
Um, Sam, what is your thoughts about COLA?
I would like to go at least to 5% and, um, you know, if we could afford five and a half, I would, I would be fine with that, but I don't know what that extra half percent would...
Your extra half percent would cost you $74,000. Countywide, well, other than EMS.
So 224,000.
So the total of one and a half would be...
Seventy, a little while ago, it was 71,712, wasn't it?
That, for just his department?
No.
Um, my department's gonna be 58.
For everybody.
875.
Was 74,328.
Well, it's close enough.
Was a half percent, with the one and a half.
It was 150.
I had, I wrote down 60,696 for another 1.5%, but then you said, wait a minute, we gotta add, uh, taxes.
That was just the sheriff, that was just the law enforcement fund. Your one and a half for everyone would cost us the 222,984.
Okay, so the 4% is costing, for everyone is costing what, countywide?
With benefits, 594,625.
Okay.
For me, for the extra one and a half percent, what'd you say it was gonna be?
All right, yeah, you're right.
So one and a half with benefits, just for the sheriff.
Seventy, I had 71,712.
71,712.
So doing five and a quarter, you're eight, eight, nine, seventeen thousand.
Your salary wouldn't be included, and I'm using total, so, yeah. This is an estimate based on the total salary in, in that department, there are some circumstances, like John would not be eligible for that COLA.
So are you comfortable approving any more full positions, uh, or asked for, and Ann plus her going back and figuring out the 5%?
So I guess I would like to know your priority with COLA, so I can go upstairs and plug that into the budget, and then we can see in the different funds where that puts them overall budget-wise. And then you can possibly decide if there's additional funding for additional employees. But if that's not your priority, then tell me what the priority is.
I guess that's if, which way you want to go about it, do you want to make sure we got that COLA raise in there? And then see what's left for additional employees, or?
That's what I think.
Pick the employees and see what's left for the...
What that COLA is, so...
Because if we don't, if we don't add any more employees, I don't have near as much heartburn about going to 5% or 5 and a half percent. If we're gonna be adding all these employees, then I, just, we gotta stay at 4%. So we either take care of the ones we got, or we add, it's kind of where I'm at, so. But Sherri, where you want to go with that?
I think different funds are gonna end up differently, some are gonna go a little to the red, some are still gonna be a little in the black, so...
Why don't we just right now make a decision, I, I proposed a 5 and a half percent COLA. If, if, if I lose, then we've got that out of the way, if I win, we've got that out of the way, so that, that's my proposal. So we go, we gotta get past the hurdle here, to get to the next hurdle. That's, you know, we gotta, um, we gotta hurdle racing.
But my vote yes or no is contingent upon whether we add other employees or make other adjustments, kind of, period, so...
Well, you're, you're not talking about the open positions, you're talking about like the lieutenant and, uh, SRO.
No, not just, not just sheriff, this is a countywide, countywide in general, not just sheriffs, I'm, I'm off the law enforcement.
I wouldn't tie them, I wouldn't tie them together, uh, then, then we get, and we, we, we argue over each additional position as it pops in front of us.
Okay, I'm gonna go, I'm, I'm fine with the 5.5, I'm voting no on any other employees.
Okay, but...
Or just, so...
So I have a question about that. So if we go to 5.5, I'm still gonna be about $130,000 in the black. So I want that new position on the lieutenant's position, and you're saying no, so that means I am not gonna be able to get that new position, and I'm gonna be $130,000 in the black. I have the money for it.
In a general, in a general discussion, yes, that's where I'm at on it.
But I'm, I'm in favor of you getting the lieutenant, how's that?
Well, I understand that, but that's what I was trying to, I, I don't...
That's where I'm trying to get, is what that bottom dollar is, and if there's additional funding, then we should add more people.
I mean, I think it's...
Okay, so go draw the 5 and a half in there.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, that's just, it's, like, if, if you all want to say right now, 5 and a half is the end goal, that's my priority, I want to then take a break and go upstairs and put that 5 and a half in, and come back down and then take a look at the bottom dollar and see what we have remaining.
I mean, the, the 5 and a half, ultimately, when we approve or disapprove, the final budget is gonna be where it's at.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
So, yeah, so, I, I think we have a direction to go there.
So do I have consensus here, 5 and a half is where we're trying to get to?
Yes.
Um, I would like to then break until 1:00 or 1:30 to give me time.
We're only here till 2:00. Or I guess...
You guys can stay longer.
Okay.
Uh, 1:00 o'clock?
Debbie?
Uh, 1, 1:15.
1:15, I'd like to come back and we'll take a look at what those changes did to the budget.
Okay. So I make a motion, we stand in recess until 1:15.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay.
And then we'll be done by 2:15.
I don't know that. I don't have a crystal, what, do you?
Yeah.
It's trying to be positive.
Uh-huh. I mean, we would all love to be done today, but I don't know that that's gonna happen.
Are you all on HBA tonight?
I got, I got a coach basketball, and Andy's got a top five, so... Not a night off, not a night off.
Well, your last chance for this year, and so, Thursday, and then it starts the next.
So before we jump back in, um, Debbie pointed out to me that we forgot to include the ARCA fund in the back of the book, so we didn't go over it, um, it's up on the screen. It's really two lines, in and out, um, we will create those projects as you approve things in there to account for each project you approve separately. Right now, the only one in there is the BKD contract, um, so not a lot to talk about at this point unless you have...
Did we get the second half in this coming calendar year?
Yes, so we got the first half in, on June 1st, so we will most likely get the second in June.
So you're sort of booking 14.9?
Yes. So do we want to go back to the sheriff first?
Sure.
Um, so the 5 and a half percent COLA, and I added in that lieutenant position, if that's his first priority. Um, with those two things in there, he still has about $65,728 in the budget. Even though he's in the red, he's only in the red his capital purchases.
And I, I'm probably gonna, I need to cut the SRO position. That'll allow me to get the merit raise and the part-time.
But the S, the SRO position only truly costs us what, John?
27. Well, whatever, 27,441.71.
I wish you could find money elsewhere and keep him in, but...
Well, to do all three of those, I'd have to come up with $91,458. If I cut the 15,000 out of my training down on the very bottom, that brings me up to $80,700, so that makes me, I'm only $11,000. $10,300. I can probably find that. That's a, start looking, she's listening. So I know I can take five from my sal, from my ammo line, I can find another 5,000. So if it's okay with you, then I'll do the, the SRO for Blair Oaks, the merit raise for 1% and the part-time salary at 4%. Along with the lieutenant position. I'm upside down, and I'll cut the training funds in all three divisions to five, to 15 grand. And that brings me to 80,000, so I'm still short about $11,000. But I can find it in my budget.
So if we cut training, what?
Training's just getting more expensive, um, and it, and the certifications are more expensive, um, and we gotta have a certification. Luckily, one of the certifications we were, that I was going for was, and it's $875 a person, was crime prevention. Um, and just today I got it, or yesterday, just today I got an email, um, it, they're offering it free, uh, online. So I also sent it to, uh, health department, I think Chris White, he's gonna take it too, so. I can make that work, I can find $10,000.
Do you guys have any issues with the items he wants to add?
Well, I, I'll cut the, on my department requested, I'll cut the jail detective and the increased training funds.
So we're going 5 and a half percent COLA?
Yes.
Then we're doing 1% merit?
Yes. But not everybody...
And we're adding the SRO?
Yes.
And we're adding the professional, lieutenant for professional standards?
Yes.
That old kid's getting fat.
Me, or are you talking? I only have one piece of broccoli, Jess, get off me.
Hey, it's Christmas time.
That is good.
These calories don't count.
Um, if you can make it work, I'm fine.
Got your two yeses then.
What's your yes too, Jeff?
Well, if we're doing a COLA, that's, we need to cut some stuff back, don't like adding too many people, so that's just my hangup. But we've got two people that are saying yes, so no sense in sitting there arguing all day.
No, but I did cut si, uh, 68,000 off my budget already.
I don't want you running short on bullets. I don't see them going down either, so...
No, and...
Just, just, we're, if we're gonna wait till everybody agrees on stuff, we're not gonna get the budget done, so...
Yep.
Roll with it.
So I have two that are okay with that, I will work with that to make sure we get this balance with those items in there.
Yep.
Um, that would make assessor and sheriff done. So, let's do someone who works next.
Okay, so we're saying we're okay, we're going 5 and a half for everybody.
At the, at the end of the day, we gotta, we gotta follow...
Do you hit, do you?
We're proceeding under that, uh, assumption.
Yes, so it's, it's in the numbers at the moment, so you can see it, and if we found something more not in agreement with, we can pull it back out, but as of right now, the 5 and a half is in there.
Okay.
It's across the board for everybody, for EMS at this point.
So we can discuss EMS, I, I'm having a hard time coming up with a way to change EMS.
In what way?
Because of their steps.
Oh, okay.
Like if you would do, even if we did an additional percentage, it measures with the step itself. Because I'm gonna give you a percentage in January 1, and then that just reduces the amount needed to get you to the next step. It, it's complicated, so, and I don't really know that we should increase every step going forward by a certain percentage because that's harder.
No, I don't, I don't think you want to do that, because that, the way that it's drawn up, and I went through it all. So your first step, and I just did all one of them on paramedics starting out. The first step is 4.9% raise, step two is 3.73. And then when we get to the middle, step three is 2.7%, step four is 2.63, and then 2.56 for step five. So it's loaded in the front to try to get you here for the first few years, and then that's where... The thought was, the theory was, once you get there for that long, then you can scale back.
Well, hopefully at that point, they're making a note of it, make it hard for them to even go somewhere else and start over, but...
Yeah, if they're gonna, yeah, if they're gonna stay, they're gonna stay. And I think this is Eric's question, we just need to work with him on it and leave it alone for now.
I will tell you that this year, um, he did request that we do something for the people that are over step seven.
So step eight would be, and I was thinking that, uh, COLA for them.
Um, we did it as a flat dollar amount, so you would get a, a thousand dollars for being over, so you would get a flat $1,000 for anyone over step seven. Which essentially to an EMT is an additional step for paramedics a little less.
So we're on public works now, and then we'll talk about that one later.
Yep. Um, so public works with the, the 5 and a half in there, that builds in a deficit in there, funded by about $94,000, but that also still includes that additional position. So we could take that new position out, um, which would save a portion of that. Um, they historically have been one of the funds that kind of has that deficit built in a little bit. We've been trying to cut it back, Eric and I have been working hard to get there. I'm not concerned by that dollar amount, but this does not include the adjustments that he proposed after the budget was done.
He's made a lot of adjustments, we just did some like a year or two ago.
Um, so yes, I actually have got information.
I was thinking it was just last year or the year before.
So I went back to 18 and dropped in the changes that have happened since 18, all the way through. At this point in time, it was a 4% COLA, but what those adjustments are, there's some significant changes in their department. This last column is total over the five years.
You know, it also, I think eliminated a position and adjusted some other salaries on a couple other positions. But now we're just gonna go back to wanting to add another position, so I'm not, not looking for that either.
And I have voiced my concerns with Eric, I don't necessarily see a problem with his progression plan as much as the implementation of it. So, um, I feel like there needs to be something that if you're moving from an equipment operator one to an equipment operator two, um, and you are above... um, and you are above maybe the starting salary for that next level, that it's a flat dollar amount that you receive, so you either receive what it takes to get you to that or X dollars. Because he is going to have some long-term people that have been here long enough that if you do it as a percent or something like that, it's going to make them more than the next step, even though they're moving up one, it would put them above the next one. So, I don't know, I I feel like we've done a lot of changes to their department in the last few years. I mean, we did almost a hundred thousand dollars in adjustments the year, we changed the starting salaries. We did twenty-seven thousand the year after that, eighteen thousand the following year. So, we've done some significant dollar amount changes in their department.
Two years ago, we did it right at the end of the year, but that was with the understanding that we didn't get to COLA. It was just the adjustment.
We did that, I don't think we did that in the last few years. Cause they've received the COLA since eighteen.
We did it with Larry Benz originally, the very first one, what, five, six years ago? And then we did, he, we did that new org- organization chart.
That was what happened in eighteen.
Yeah, is what we did. And kinda So, I think that was our last.
So, I, I was trying to pull up Eric's Road and Bridge salaries spreadsheet that shows. So, in his sheet, um, he has the new position out. Um, and then he has about twenty thousand in adjustments proposed. At some point, I think you have to see some of that attrition. Can't take all of the money that someone's built up for being here thirty years and divide it out over everyone else.
Everybody else, everybody does that. Everybody?
Not everybody.
A lot, a lot, well, a lot of our-
Right.
The auditor doesn't do it.
No, the auditor doesn't.
Can you come here and tell me why I'm not able to pull this up? Am I in the right territory here?
I think you have to be in Is there not one called commission?
Yeah, there is a commission.
And then, in commission is their commission budget. Twenty-twenty-two. And then No? There's my proposed salaries, is that the one you want?
Well, what are we, yeah, I guess, is that where we are now?
This is Eric's sheet. He sent you guys by email. You want me to forward that email to you?
Yeah. Thank you.
I just sent that out for you.
We're in Road and Bridge now?
Road and Bridge salaries, yeah.
Okay.
So, I don't know with the five and a half percent, they are currently in a deficit already, so do you want to add?
How, how, how deep into a deficit?
Almost a hundred thousand, ninety-four.
Do we have a step paid for for the department?
Uh, we don't at the moment, but in that email I just forwarded to you, he has something he's calling a progression plan that they are trying to, um, work towards. For your path progression plan is what he's calling it. But it hasn't been approved by you all. I think it truly outlines what's required for, you know, an equipment operator one versus two versus three. And what, yep, that, yep.
So, it's up on, you could have all technician threes.
In his world, yes.
That's not.
And I don't know that that's the best plan to have. I think you have X number of ones, X number of twos, X number of threes, and when one of the ones above you opens up, then you have the ability to move. But that's just my two cents. It's definitely not their opinion on that. Their argument to that would be they want every equipment operator to be able to operate any piece of equipment.
Well, they can't. They're just gonna be a technician two, because we're gonna have a technician three position open. I mean, at some point, we make them all directors.
Yeah, cause they're not gonna be able to advance.
I, I see where he's coming from.
My fear is, is that, I mean, most of these were not in the proposed budget from the department to me. But I, I see the problem of, oh, I'm gonna move so-and-so up, but that's gonna pay them more than the crew leader, so now I gotta move all my crew leaders up to accommodate that one. That isn't the way we should approach our budget. But again, my two cents. Yeah, I don't know. Um, there is one position that, um, I feel probably does deserve some additional funding, and that would be their GIS technician, Andy Myers. I think they've given him some additional duties and things with mapping that, um, I think that would be additional work that maybe he hasn't done in the past, that- You guys tell me where, where you wanna land.
I don't know, we just made a bunch of adjustments to it, not that long ago. And we're doing the five and a half percent at this point.
So, our, our goal is to find X dollars here right now?
Um, I don't think so. I don't I don't feel bad about the ninety-four thousand dollar number. That includes the five and a half. I have some concerns if we go much more than that. So, if you guys are good with that, are there any of the other adjustments on his list that you want to see done this year?
That number included the extra person in part-time.
And I can remove that extra person, yes. Yes, so, I think he's made it clear that they're willing to eliminate the new position. Instead of taking that sixteen-three thousand dollar person and creating two, they would just replace it with one at lower salary.
And I would be good with that.
Okay, so, I will remove that position. And then, are there any of the other adjustments that you all want to see done?
You're saying right now they're in the red?
They are. So, it's about ninety-four, but that one position, if we take it out, we'll probably save them about forty. So, we'll get back down to like fifty thousand, which in the past, we've been closer to three or four hundred thousand in the red, so.
Yeah.
There, there's had some fluctuation depending on how many snowstorms we have and things like that, so there is, if we have a really bad winter, it's not gonna look very good. If we have a really good winter, it'll look a little better. So, I'm not concerned with that dollar number.
And that money comes from general revenue?
What?
That chart?
Pick up for the red.
No, they have reserves at the moment that would cover it. They even have enough reserves that we're talking about putting one-time funding back in for certain things at the end of the year if their cash flow is healthy enough.
Right, and those are on-time funding things, or-
Right.
Not salaries, which don't be here, here. I'll be in the meantime, so I'll get to the adjustments. I guess I think we made a bunch of them.
Well, I'm, I'm okay with adjusting, eliminating that one position.
Right, do you want any of the other adjustments, do you have a note of the other adjustments?
I'm a no to the other adjustments.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, while we're looking at his email, he also has a planning salary amount there. He did not include adjustments to planning in the original request, but when he came back up, he did for two people in there as well. Um, one of those people would have been a fifteen dollar an hour person that was getting a slightly larger adjustment, but with that five and a half percent COLA-
Took care of that.
It's not required.
Yeah, so that's what I'm-
So, are you guys a no to those adjustments as well?
Oh, he didn't have that in this?
It wasn't in my request, but attached to his email was a separate sheet that had two more adjustments on it.
Okay, so they had adjustments to twenty-nine, four-eighty, which is adding a four percent COLA. This is the same one we, but, uh, have cell phone stipend on, right?
No. This is two other-
No, that was-
Same department, two other people. So, we did add the half cellphone stipend for the part-time person in that department. So, first time we've done cellphone stipend for a part-timer. That's the same department.
So, a half-time, uh, or a half, half a phone is one-eighty? Or a half stipend?
Yes, normally it's three hundred and sixty, so half of it would be a hundred eighty.
I probably a no on this.
What?
I'm probably, no.
No to these as well?
Yeah.
Anybody else? I need two.
I was trying to find my notes on, so the, the five and a half's gonna bring the part-time up above what the goal was to get it to anyway, the fifteen?
Yeah.
Not the part-time.
Oh.
So, it's the administrative assistant in their department with one of the people under fifty dollars an hour. The five and a half will get her above that.
Okay.
He was proposing an additional adjustment to her.
But it's not needed now? Uh- Or it is needed, he still wants it?
This, this one would be needed.
Oh.
I was taking her to thirty-one-two. He's asking to go to thirty-three. She's currently at twenty-nine-nine.
What are the initials of this person?
C N.
Okay, I'm looking at the right spot. Where is planning?
Planning's in general, one-seventy-three.
Page.
There, page fifty-four.
So, what's your net number right now for planning?
For planning? Hundred ninety-six, seven-seventeen.
Which is less than the twenty-one hundred budget, budget?
So, in twenty-twenty-one, they had an additional full-timer for part of the year. So, that's why that one's higher. So, we had a full-timer that retired and went part-time during the year.
It's within, well, it's also, okay, below the budget, below projected. For twenty-twenty-one.
Right, because, because that full-time position went away, yep.
Right, okay, got it.
I'm just gonna stick with the five and a half on those.
Is that what you said, too?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just-
Might as well make it unanimous. Although he didn't need it, right?
Okay, so, I'm going to-
Five and a half makes a difference, it's-
All of general fund together. Um, so, because of the adjustments we did to taxes, one being use tax and the other being sales tax, um, general fund is to the black about a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. That's with the five and a half.
Okay.
Um, we do have multiple requests from, um, then that I kinda gotta go down, down the path, and you guys tell me yes or no.
Make a note that next year, put my, uh, budget book in a three-ring.
In a three-ring binder.
Yeah. I can keep inserting pages then.
Gotta think about that. I take the stuff that I have laying in there loose.
Okay, so, we're gonna take them one by one. Um, Treasury Office did not request additional people or adjustments, but requested that overlap of time to, to train a new person.
Right.
I don't feel like we should budget that upfront. I think if you guys-
Just let it happen?
Yes, if you guys want to let that happen, I'm okay with letting that happen. Um, we also don't norm- We also don't normally budget payouts. So Mark will have a payout of time.
Accude, accrued vacation.
Yes, we don't normally budget that. So I think we go into the year knowing their budget is going to be off in salary when we get to December. But if you want to give them the okay to overlap for two weeks to train somebody new, I don't have an issue with that.
So if...
And that only presumes that that person is hired at the same or bigger number. I mean, it could come in a lower number, too.
Correct.
Okay.
You would hope it'd be a little low.
Well, my...
There and why is the problem is that it's going to come in at the same salary as what they left at, if you go by history.
Right, although I think it'll be difficult to find somebody with the same qualifications.
I think so, too.
Of the departing.
But if the money's in there, I sometimes think that that isn't necessarily the argument, but...
I know, but we'll get a sheet, right?
Right.
They've got the money in there and get the sheet.
Well, they may have the money in there, but then again, the money is going to be short by paid out and by duplication of... So they really don't have it all there if they want to live within the budget.
Well, if they bring somebody in that says X amount of dollars, it's 45,000, and they find somebody just off the street to fill, meet to fill the seat and is not qualified or anything, I mean, they still send that payphone through to the 45,000. And I don't, I don't know if there's really any way for us to stop it from backing if it's in our budget. That's about never...
Well, yeah, that's, we, we're...
We've got the pay cards, you know, supposed to be the starting salary and so...
I hear you.
It's frustrating.
Are you good with leaving it what it is at the moment?
Yeah, yes, yes.
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 I'm okay with it.
Okay.
Just because of that office, it's all the way.
Right, no, I, it's, it's...
Next department is public administrator. So taking his part-time administrative assistant to full-time and then adjusting the two I had in there. Now, I did adjust their adjustment amount after the 5%. So I told you earlier, we do the cola first and then the adjustment is the amount to get them to that set salary. So I did adjust the adjusted adjustment amount to get them to the same salary. So in total, the adjustment for them is the same. It's just they have a higher cola and a smaller adjustment to get them to the same number. Now Ralph did have higher adjustments requested than what I have in here, and if you want to do that, I have to find his amount.
57.
So this one here is not going to be for her because it was jacked up and changed. And then Ralph came in, so we've been trying to make some adjustments.
So he asked for adjustment to his chief deputy.
Which they used to not have.
But they used to not have. And so her salary has changed significantly over the last two years already. So I did not adjust it again. Sorry, I'm trying to find his actual, he was asking that she go to 47.
And what will she be?
She'll be 45, 196.
With, with...
Yeah, so... I don't know that. And then he was asking for one of his deputies to go to lead deputy at 35 and the other one to go to 33. I compromised and then 34 and 32. Because I think those are the starting salaries for those positions in the grid we used to use for a while.
So I'm going to start at the top with the chief deputy. If we go to chief deputy, that's going to put them at the top of the pay scale.
So my concerns with that is that we have some other chief deputies in other departments that are barely at that point or slightly above that have been here longer. So that was my reason for no.
That's where I was going to go with that.
Not that I don't think she does a wonderful job and has helped Ralph a lot.
Correct. So the next one would be the one of the deputies.
It's the bottom one that's going to 34. He asked for 35. Which I think... So a deputy one in those, it's collector, recorder, assessor, clerk, and now public administrator. Starting salary was 30 and then the next one was 32 and then there's a 36. We haven't hired the last few of that because we haven't found anybody that hire at 30,000. So... So I guess the question is, do you want to adjust that to 35 instead of 34?
So if everybody's in line for their deputy collector, recorder, clerk.
All of them are over that amount.
Because of the start of the third, because we started them.
The newest ones have come in 34.
Which would be about in line with when we started it at 32 or 3 years ago when we adopted the figure and added the colas.
Right, so yes, it should have moved up. And I think the difference here in two in his department is their experience and the amount of experience they had prior to. So he was actually asking for one to be higher than the other.
So, okay, again, what's, what to make her with the five and a half?
With the five and, well, she would go to 34,000. So he's asking for 35. Do you want to give him additional $1,000? And then the other one's going to 32 and he was requesting 33, so...
And if those numbers were plugged in, what's the lower right-hand bottom line number for public administrator? A negative two?
Yeah. I'm not going to know. You're going to add 2,000 plus benefits to whatever number you're now...
Hey, I'm glad I don't see, I, I don't, I don't put my hands down. I'm...
It's not the hand, it's not the hands, it's the foot.
So it's 251,846 at the moment. And that's a significant increase from prior because we are taking that part-time to full-time already.
It is a big, you know, it is a big number. It's not as big as the budget officer first talked about, is it?
Well, it should be more than what I first thought, hopefully. Why are we less? Did I do something wrong? Oh, because we increased his revenue by 15,000. We talked about his fees, so we changed his fees in there already.
Well, that's, maybe that's one of the reasons the people deserve some money is because of what the top lines become.
Well, I don't know. I actually think the fee number is down. Overall is down. Because last year's budget was 78. We're going to 65.
What was, yeah, but last year's activity was what?
So that was prior to Ralph.
I know, but, yeah.
Yes, but we were 100,000. We were like 99. We were like 89 if you look at his prior...
The negative number? Oh, you're talking about the revenue number?
The revenue number.
Yeah. Well, this is, this is, you don't fix these problems in overnight.
So let's just pull in...
So last year, we changed, how come I've got a note about adding or changing a lead deputy? But neither one of those are a lead deputy.
That was, so his chief went to a lead and then when Ralph came, went to a chief. So we, we have jumped her...
Okay, so the lead went to the chief. Chief was eliminated, went to the lead, then...
So sixteen was 100,000 in fees. Then we went to 78, 66, 68, 29. We're coming back up. So we've...
Right.
We had a few years where that was not being done correctly.
I'd like to help Ralph as much as we can. I think he's, you know, he, by rights, this should be his first year and he came in...
No, I think Ralph's doing a great job and I'm trying to help him as much as I can. I just, we're taking off a big bite with changing the full-time, our part-time to full-time already, the decrease in fees. We went from 189,000 in deficit in his department to 251. So it's a big jump. I'd like to eat the elephant smaller pieces. But...
I'm, I'm going to vote for them, for these, for Ralph's request, but we'll see how that goes. I'm in favor of granting those two numbers that he's asked for.
So we're still going to have clerk one and clerk two, or are they both clerk ones?
I think you're going to, his proposal was one would be a lead and one would be a two. Which he's still in line with those numbers. The lead should be 36.
Okay.
And the other one should be 32, 33. So he's off 1,000 in both of them. One up, 1,000, one down, 1,000.
But that's without any colas on those starting lines, without those starting moving. It's when we implemented this, you know, two years ago.
Right.
Which that could be argued either way, I guess.
So...
I'm okay with it. I'm with Harry.
I'm adding them in. I got two, sorry, Jeff.
No, it's just...
I was trying to catch up with the ones from last year that we changed, too, and my notes aren't as clear. I didn't know if these were just what he requested last year, if we did them or not. Because I think last year was requested for the deputy to be 33, 5.
Are you going with the chief deputy being where she's at? That one concerns me because you have other chief deputies that are not where...
No, I didn't like that one. So was there an adjustment to it or just a 5.5?
He was asking that it go to 47.
How true will be at what, what will she be at with the five and a half?
She's 45, 196.
So that one I was not okay with when I was looking at it originally.
Well, that one I had probably just because of the comparison of other chief deputies.
I think Harry's was just for the two lower and I'm for the two lowers.
So...
I'm, I want the, her to have 46 instead of 47 and you guys are at 45 and change or something, right? So I lost that one.
Yeah, no adjustment on the chief is where I was at.
Okay.
But then on the other two, that one wasn't going to be a hard burn because I think we're getting them more.
Okay.
Comparison.
125 recorder is just changing her MOU to where you guys cover the deputy. Currently she pays the salary, you pay the benefits. She wants you to pay the whole thing. I currently have the whole thing in there as a statement for it. Do you have? And the history of that was there was a fifth person in their office up until the last year of Larry Roddeman's term. That person quit. He did not fill it. Ralph did not fill it. Judy came back asking for it. But I will say, when Larry Roddeman was here, he funded the whole thing through his recorder's fund. So that's the difference.
So I...
And do you have it in the budget as you guys paying the whole thing?
And your lower right-hand number is?
A negative 16,092.
So we ask her to pay the 16,000 of her recorder's funds.
How healthy is that?
The recorder's fund is healthy.
300 and, no, 30... Where am I? Cash forward, 244, 30?
She's going to carry forward about 240,000 for that.
Okay.
We've never done an MOU like that. We've taken the approach that an MOU normally is to pay, fully fund either a full or a part-time position. It was a little different when she came up mid-year this year and asked for her to pay the salary and us to pay the benefits. Not that you can't do an MOU for that, but in the past, it's always been yours or mine. We try to get away from salary adjustments, like we're letting you do adjustments with your other funds. You're either funding a physician or not.
Yeah, it's more of a supplemental raise. Most of them were.
Right.
So then we did kind of get away from those. I don't remember if we have any of those left.
Uh, raise ones? No, we don't.
So...
16, 092 negative is okay with me.
And they're not paying. You're good with, stand brought up her paying that difference, you're good if they're not paying.
It's just going to come out of the recorder's fund?
Well, we would have, we would have to do an MOU to that.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Which, general fund's healthy. I don't know that fighting over 16,000, but...
Speaking of the devil who just walked in.
Got extra listeners today.
Were you listening downstairs?
Of course.
Okay, good for you.
So you got $16,000?
I do. But I did want to mention the recorder's fund is healthy. I do use it for a lot of IT things. And for the last two years, we've been trying to do a software changeover. You could talk to Brian about some confidential issues we had. If I do that, that's going to take a big hit on the recorder's fund because I will use it for that. And when Larry was the recorder, he got angry and decided he's just going to pay more out of the recorder's fund. So he never did, I don't believe, ask. I could be wrong, but...
I don't remember. I think that was prior to me even.
It was. It was prior to Kristen, but salaries really should all come out of GR and I hate to lose her or any of them.
And Judy will still have an MOU for next year either way for the two part-time positions. She currently funds those out of her recorder's fund.
Okay.
I'm fine with it. I mean, Judy's been great to work with on these things. So if there's something that comes up, you know, later down the road, too, that we need to get that maybe is not just for the recorder's office, you know, that we could use across other offices and stuff, I think we'd be... I think we'd be able to work with her on it too, so.
Um.
And we'd get rid of one of them MOUs. The part-time ones too, I mean, it's, we're using those to catch up on some of the scanning and that stuff, so.
So, uh, we didn't talk about as we went through, we do have currently four, four MOUs. Judy, which she funds the two part-time positions and the benefits on one at the moment, but next year will just be the two. Uh, the sheriff has one out of his sheriff revolving fund to pay for one and a half people that do CCW permits. Prosecutor has one that he funds, uh, a full-time attorney out of his delinquent tax, I think.
I'm okay if Judy wants to pay for mine.
And then Donnell has had some supplemental ones the last two years where she's gonna go over on part-time and funds it partially, so that, that one's not a consistent one, that one's when she comes and asks, so. We will sign those prior to the budget adoption. Because if they don't sign up on the MOU, there are positions that will not be funded in the budget. Okay. So. Um, the next adjustment was in information systems. And Debbie left a note on that one. I did not go backwards and do my due diligence of looking at adjustments to that person in the past, but they got a significant amount this year in budget.
There was a significant one last year, if I remember correctly, for.
Yeah, took effect in January of this year.
Okay.
Um, it was six thousand dollars, so.
I, as great a job as I think they do, I'm just, I can't swallow that one either.
So that one's up to you guys if you want. It was just a flat dollar amount, so it was not to a particular salary amount. So I did not adjust it when I adjusted the COLA in anybody that.
It was, it was five thousand.
It was six thousand last year.
My notes are lying to me then. So.
I just have Debbie's note.
About six thousand was this year's request.
Six thousand took effect in January of this year.
Okay, I had five thousand in my notes, so my secretary's slacking.
So that one I truly, you guys decide if you wanna do it. Again, it was prior to any COLA, so that COLA number is a significant dollar amount, so you're gonna be above.
It was prior to any COLA?
Correct, so they asked for the two thousand without knowing what the COLA was.
And the COLA exceeds that number?
Yeah, and I would.
So you wanna take it out?
I'm with Jeff on that one.
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yep.
Um, next one is Greg Camp. So I did include an adjustment for the one employee that was under the fifteen. I did adjust it down to be exactly what it would be to get her to the fifteen dollars an hour. Um, Greg did have some additional requests that I didn't include. Uh, he asked for an additional employee and some significant salary adjustments.
I'm thinking something about salary adjustments of twenty and ten.
Yes, twenty-eight thousand for the director.
Yes, and the ten was split a couple ways, or different?
He never submitted to me what the ten thousand breakdown was. Actually, in the original notes to the budget, it was thirty thousand for the director, is what was in the notes.
I think there is some adjustment in, in play, but it's not that big. Not thirty, not twenty.
I, yeah. Um, so I did have that sheet.
Is that in over on that, uh?
So he would be one of your department directors on that comparison sheet?
That, that, that was an email?
Yes, that, well, I emailed it to you prior to.
So there was a pretty big, significant change to our facilities director.
So here is. So per your guys' request, I went back to eighteen and did your, your directors. These are the adjustments from eighteen until now for the particular director. It may not have been the same person in eighteen, but that's the change.
That's the director.
Change from, yep, change from eighteen to now.
Look at that.
So I don't know that that director is lagging behind in adjustments, it just may be that he had a lower salary starting out.
Mine number seven's not a director. Or you just got the wrong name in there?
I just copied, I copied and pasted, I accidentally pasted that, sorry.
So that's just a spare on there?
Yeah.
Now line number ten is due to other extenuating.
Yes, it's related to, yes, COVID.
Right.
And we need to talk about that one to decide if you're leaving it or changing it or what you're doing with it.
Right.
And so, it's right in line with a lot of the other ones and way over a couple other ones, and then percentage-wise, it's more.
Take that one out.
And we've also tried to relieve some of the duties off of that position by giving an assistant or a deputy for.
What's the, the hard number, this, this is the increase?
Um, yes, so hard number, and this, I actually need to change this to five point five.
It rounded it to six for you.
Well, it's just rounded at the top.
Quit rounding. No, you don't have to change it, I mean, I know what you're, you got going.
There it is. And obviously, there have been multiple, um, directors that have changed in the last couple of years. So EMS, Public Works, Emergency Management, Juvenile. And then Sheila is obviously new, so her history is not there, there was no Human Resource Director prior to.
No, I think our adjustments have been right in line and. So. If we're gonna do anything, I'd rather do somewhere down the line when we have merit raises and then we can go through with all our directors and, uh, evaluate.
I, I just have a, this isn't a philosophy, but a thought that, uh, except for the newest one on the page there, there's only one that's under sixty thousand. And I, I, I think it ought to be at least sixty thousand.
Little different jobs though.
They're a little different jobs, but, uh, he's, you know, he's got, how many folks, how many folks do you have to kind of keep heard on?
Seven, I think they're dating with him.
Well, and he, he's not really just basically a nine, uh, eight to four thirty person.
Who is? You tell me any of them that are in that list. There's nobody that's an eight to five person.
Well, he's, he's.
They, every one of them's got their, well, they may be sitting there with Mount Rushmore in the background, they're still working.
Oh.
I mean.
We gotta get a background just to put up here behind.
So, I, what I would like to do, if we're gonna put it in there.
Should I ask Brian's calling, should I? Yeah, he, uh.
He messed up, wrong number. If, if you put it in there, I think we need to do evaluations and at that point decide if we're gonna do it. Cause I don't wanna talk personnel here if we talk about that position. It's one thing, we can put it in there.
Well, I said my piece, I, I think it ought to be at least sixty thousand dollars in the, in the budget.
So that adjustment would be one thousand eight oh nine eighty-nine additional to get to that point.
Now whether or not the, the payroll sheet comes around and gets signed is a, is a second issue, right? This puts it in the budget and this is under the commission. It's not dependent upon another elected official to spend their budgeted money.
Well, if y'all approve it, I mean, it's, it's part of the budget at that point if we're, if we're gonna go ahead and do it and send a paint form through, so.
I would like to ask that going forward, when the budget requests are due in September, if you guys would give me some idea if you want to do department head adjustments. Um, I would like to have the ability to try to include those in the budget if it's something you're thinking about.
I was going to, but Debbie didn't request one, so.
I did mention that.
Debbie messed up again, is that what you're saying?
Well, she did mention she is gonna request twenty thousand raise for herself as well.
So I, I think the, the department directors are in and on.
They are, if they don't ask for it, they're not gonna get it, if they do ask for it, they look like they're.
Yes, yes, so it, it is a tight spot for them to be in. You don't wanna ask to give yourself a raise, but in some circumstances.
Why wouldn't you? I mean, that's the best way to get a raise is to ask for one.
Or, or make a man.
Well, I, I would, I would agree on, on sixty for Greg and I think maybe even Jill and, and Debbie.
It's no difference than, you know, if your kids are wanting something or, you know, yeah, you're probably scared to ask, but you sure as hell aren't gonna get it if you don't ask for it. Well, except for maybe in this case, now Sam's throwing it out there to give it to you anyway, so. No, I think y'all should ask it.
Can you go back to that one, you had the?
The previous one? Yep.
We're, we're taking a lot of stuff off that plate too, I don't know, they have to push it, snow in the parking lots and, um, different, different things, so. So I don't know if Harry was proposing bringing it to sixty or just thinking.
I just put it in to see how much it would cost, so one thousand eight oh nine eighty-nine would be what?
To bring it to sixty, well, I thought Harry mentioned something of sixty, so.
That's what, I just thinking, except for the, the newest one who's only been here. And then again, do we think about our EM fellow here at this time? He's been here for some months, but, uh, a couple months. Do we, did we make any, uh, representations to him on the way in that we look at anything later?
I don't thi, I don't think so. I know we have with some where, you know, they have kind of a.
Should ask Sheila, I guess.
Yeah.
I don't think we did.
If we did, I, I don't like those anyway, if you try them out for six months, if you.
I, I think he's, I think he's.
Keep them, if not, you let them go.
I think he's done a fantastic job.
And I will explain right now, so EMS does not get the COLA, but he does have, um, the chief and the administrative assistant do not have STEPS, so they will get the same COLA as other employees, and that's stated in there.
Yes, okay, right.
Yeah.
Yes, so they will.
And that is, that's everyone except those paramedics and the, the deputies?
No, um, everybody that has a STEP chart, so that's everyone except for the chief and the administrative assistant.
Oh, okay, so. The deputy chief, the deputy chief?
They have a STEP chart.
Those two have a STEP chart?
Yes.
Okay.
So anybody that does not have an approved STEP chart would get the same COLA as other employees.
Alright.
Was that a question or you're just telling?
Well, I need someone to say yes to the sixty thousand or no.
I'm fine with the sixty thousand.
So I have two, are you?
Got your two.
Two cents.
And then the other ones?
Let's see if, if there's any additional information from HR on what we, I mean, what I, what I don't wanna do is, is say, oh, yeah, we did tell you this, but we didn't put it in the budget, so we can't do it, that kinda thing.
Right. Usually the only department that does like a probationary increase was Public Works and we've kind of pushed them to get away from that because, um, people forget or don't submit or whatever, like, I would admit that they're the reason why.
Yeah, okay.
But.
People forget, you think?
No, well, he had.
The person getting it doesn't forget, but their, their director or whoever forgets.
Or the commissioner forgets.
Um, did you have anything else in one thirty-one you wanted to change? I, I didn't get a breakdown of what that ten thousand was.
No, I don't wanna do, I think with the, with the five and a half, I think we're good there.
Okay.
No, I'm, I'm.
Do I have another? Do again? Going one, going two.
I think just, yeah, I mean, putting that in, that, no, I think.
Okay. When was the last time we adjusted the maintenance workers? And we bumped them up?
Last year.
I have that one too. So.
We had a maintenance worker last year.
They got an adjustment in. They got an adjustment in eighteen to nineteen, in nineteen to twenty. Yeah.
Yeah.
So here is.
I don't even know why I tried to read that when you're scrolling back.
I'm standing right here and I'm having trouble, I got glasses.
Yeah, last year I think we had to, I mean, just.
We have adjusted theirs quite a bit because they were, they're where we thought they were.
Grossly underpaid, yeah.
Yes.
So five and a half percent's gonna take them up.
Okay, are you guys good with no other adjustments? One, two.
So the, the bottom on the custodial worker, it'll get it up over the thirty?
Yes.
Thirty-two for, was that the magic number?
Uh, thirty-one two, they will be at thirty-one two at least starting.
Okay.
And that's fifteen dollars an hour.
Okay.
Alrighty.
Okay. So health department's kind of the same way. Um, their adjustments were flat dollar adjustments, they were not percentages or certain salaries. Um, so I think you need to talk about whether those adjustment amounts are still, um, good numbers. Yep, their department's up there.
I was laughing about a joke in my phone. As far as you know.
You mean to just, you know this here?
Yeah, you could. It's not the exact one, cause she changed it. But she's gonna email it to me real quick, or you?
I'll email it to all three of you.
Yep, and then I'll put it on your drive.
Be sure to, uh, change the budget on three, three ring binders. We want more, and here, with this goes in, three ring binders.
Yeah, but it changes daily. Oh, three, I don't know what that is in here. And three reminder, oh, this, yes, yeah. I see. Oh, easy flipping.
I just emailed that in, so you can open it from your email, Terry.
Good.
And then I'll move it later. So you're, you're right there?
Thank you.
So I didn't have a problem with the adjustments with the four, but you may want to possibly adjust them down a little with the five and a half. I don't know if you wanna walk through them one at a time. Big one.
Okay, so now what are we looking at here? We are looking at?
Basically that J column.
Yeah, the adjustment column. So the two in yellow are the ones that were under the fifteen dollars an hour. I adjusted them down to be what they should be to get them to the fifteen dollars. Anything not highlighted yellow is what was originally requested. Again, that was prior to any cola, so. And do I have?
So when we go look at the, we look at the cola in H versus the adjustment in J?
The cola in A, yes.
Both together.
Well, I, oh, but they, we would still take that adjustment to get where they wanted to go or not?
Well, so let me go back and look at her. So she's saying the average medical receptionist pay was around thirty-two, two, one, four. So. And then the environmental people, she wanted them to come up to forty-six thousand is where they should have started. Except for the one that was here before, I think she was trying to raise him up beyond that.
BM.
What, right, both, yep, the yellow.
Yeah, I wanna look at that one to see what, isn't that who it was?
So her goal was to get the health clinic clerk to thirty-two, two, one, four with the five and a half percent. We've gone to thirty-three, five, thirty-four.
Yes, that's good.
But is that where you wanna be?
We have more than that now.
Her goal was to take current salary under G and add J.
Plus four. Well, so her goal was a three percent cola, a three percent merit.
Okay, so it's six percent and we're doing five and a half.
I know, so.
So we're really.
That's pretty damn close.
So the additional adjustment is almost beyond that.
He's cursing. He said the word.
So, I mean, we can adjust that down.
No, I don't, I wouldn't, would adjust it down, you'd be. Yeah, I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
Need to adjust it down, at least by the way.
Well.
So if the goal was six and they're getting five and a half.
Well, then you're not adjusting down.
I'm adjusting the adjustment down.
Oh, yes.
Yes. So what dollar amount do you want the adjustment to be?
Well, I think a hundred and six of the first column. What's that?
Take what?
Hundred and six percent. She was looking for three and three?
Yeah, well.
Six percent on the current, take the current times a hundred and six.
Six, whoa.
Not a hundred and six percent.
So six percent would be seventeen sixty-five and we're sixteen seventeen.
So it just takes a few more dollars to get.
I'll take that too.
One forty-seven oh nine.
So that brings it to total to, keeps kicking you back down, doesn't it?
Yeah, thirty, see, that doesn't make any sense. Thirty-one, one eighty-one and she said the average salary's thirty-two, two fourteen. So to me, she's trying to get to thirty-two, two fourteen, right?
But she's already, this gets you to thirty-three, change, right?
No, it gets you to thirty-one, one eighty-one. Well, put the twenty-five hundred, it does. If you adjust the adjustment down, it doesn't.
Is that in her original request?
Yeah.
Back at all.
So thirty-two, two fourteen is.
What was the other number we were shooting at a while ago? Thirty-one, two?
Thirty-one, two was the fifteen dollar an hour people. So thirty-three, five, thirty-four is where they would be if you left the twenty-five hundred dollar adjustment in there. But that is definitely more than what she was requesting. She was requesting that they be the average medical receptionist of thirty-two, two fourteen.
So five and a half puts them at what? Thirty-one?
Yes, thirty-one oh thirty-four. So you want the difference to get them to thirty-two, two fourteen?
Yes, that's what I, that was my.
So the, the AB one, she's wanting more for to get to, because she's got more experience with us. That's why there's a difference on, we're not just trying to get them all to that minimum thirty-one, two or thirty-two.
It takes an adjustment of eleven hundred and eighty dollars to get that person there, correct? If we're just working on math, you're not talking about good, bad, or indifferent, we're just talking math.
So is that what you want?
What is, does it trap us into?
Well, so there, there's another one here. Same, same position. This one was two thousand instead of twenty-five hundred. So it looks like she was trying to take that first one a little bit higher than the other and maybe it was based on experience. I don't know.
Okay, she said more for the AB one because she has more experience with us and thirty-two for DS. So that's a fairly new hire there. AB has two and a half.
It wouldn't have been at thirty-two without the five and a half on the other one. It wouldn't have been there before.
I think that's where she's wanting to get with it. Is get to thirty-two with. We can call her up if you want an explanation.
That one to thirty-two is one thousand nine thirty-two fifty and we're trying to get this one to what?
Thirty-two oh sixty-seven?
So I don't have that. Hold on. Thirty-two, two-ten for DS and then thirty-three, six eighty-one for AB.
Thirty-three, six eighty-one?
Yeah, that's probably here in my notes here, it's not found yet. Hey, I found the thirty-two, two, one, four.
That's four, two, six, four, six, two, eight. That's more than we had in there originally. That's more than was originally in the budget. Cause now I have a one and a half percent more and it was twenty-five hundred dollars and not twenty-six.
Yeah.
Do what?
Thirty-three, five, thirty-four, seventy-two.
No way that go forward.
So with the one point five percent, we're gonna, or the five point five percent, you're gonna get more than the?
Yeah, I was at twenty-five hundred for the adjustment at four percent cola. We went to the five and a half. But if you're saying that's what she wanted to get to, she's going to twenty-six, forty-six to get her there. Twenty-six, forty-six, twenty-eight is what it would take to get her to the thirty-three, whatever. I'm gonna change, go back to what they were for a moment, just so we don't get lost.
Okay, she's wanting to bring the minimum for the receptionist's pay to thirty-two, two-ten. The, the average medical receptionist's pay is around thirty-two, two, one, four. So she's wanting to get to one up to thirty-two, two-ten and then the AB one with experiences wanting to get thirty-three, six eighty-one. And I don't know what numbers were in there before.
This is what was in there before, except for this was the four percent, not the five and a half. So I had twenty-five hundred and two thousand, but that wasn't getting them to those numbers because I only had four percent cola.
Okay, well, I don't know why, to what that number was or.
Well, so let's go back.
If it changed from.
On her proposed, so.
Maybe it changed, I don't know.
So we were going to thirty-three, oh ninety-three and thirty-one, six forty were the two amounts that I had in the budget. And that was their four percent plus their adjustment.
And that's what, that was her target?
I thought that was her target, because I think she only requested a three percent cola and then those flat dollar amount adjustments.
Is it, is it okay to hit her target?
Just with a different combination.
Different combination, a combination of five point five and then the plug figure to get you.
That's what I was trying to get to, but I got confused.
Well, and I didn't know if, if we started down that road, if it, it led us down a road that we didn't wanna go down because it trapped us into some other number that we weren't looking.
I don't think so. So if my target's thirty-one, six forty and thirty-three, oh ninety-three? Oh nine, three, four, seven. This one's, yes. So then I wanna go here. Two oh five, eight, seven, five instead of twenty-five hundred and this one would be. One, five, seven, two fifty. Okay, let's go to the next. Do you wanna do that with all of them, the way they are?
Well, that's where I was, we could try that and see what happens. I, I didn't wanna get a unexpectedly rude awakening shock at the end if we did that.
No, they should all be a little bit less if we do them that way.
It's because we're being quote, so, well, it's being, that, that five point five is what is the.
Yes.
Is making things easier to get.
So I can, I can do that with all of them if that's what you want me to do.
Yeah, the Progressive Caucus are actually a four-day work with Bill. Everybody's gonna get a twenty percent cut in pay then, is that right?
I'm, I'm assuming four tens.
Yeah, I don't, I bet not.
No, there's one to go thirty dollars a week at same pay.
Doesn't that sound like?
So is that gonna close offices down one day a week so we have less electric and less?
Sorry, it's gonna take a minute.
That's all right. We've got a captive audience.
Have one of your pepper mints?
What do you want, you want a green?
No, no, I'll try one of the red ones. Thank you, sir.
Red. Thank you.
Baklava, right there.
Candy. I'll have a piece of baklava in a minute.
That's, that's pastry candy.
I got my leftover pizza still. Germany.
Pizza house?
I wasn't gonna do free advertising, I, you know. Yeah, I was.
I got some good Mexican places.
We got so many good pizza places around here though, my goodness.
Has the Mexican place opened yet, Debbie and Russellville?
Yeah, if there's no action up there, I don't know what's going on.
Well, Mrs. Russellville, let us know.
So those adjustments now equal to the total that it was before, it's just the combination to get them to that salary amount is different.
Is it all third now?
Yes.
So this is where she wanted to be?
Yes.
And before that number was twenty-five hundred?
Yes.
Down here, this is where she, no.
It's down one, sorry. It's this one.
That was two.
Yeah.
And that's good, too.
Yep.
This is where she wanted to be. Does it, does it do anything goofy to anybody else?
No. Because we adjusted those WIC certifiers at the same time, looked at fifteen dollars an hour, so most of it should still be.
So the ones with that minimum pay, I'm, I think I'm okay with. Then the other one's a pretty big jump for the environmental specialist, so that's the other one we need to talk about.
That was the one that he was here, left, came back. They only had one, the forty-four thousand dollar position open, but he left being a two, so they're trying to get him back up to where it would have been if he was.
Never left.
And we really haven't had to train him or anything, I guess.
So he had almost five years in before he left, um, came back, was able to go right to the position and. My only, my only thing is that's the same argument as like, uh, it's argument. You know, are we gonna have three environmental specialist threes or are we gonna say, well, you know, if they work their way up to it and they are doing it, we can do that, but are we, otherwise are we gonna have a one, two, and three and you get to fill that number three position when it opens up?
So the other two newest ones are going to two as well, but they are going to forty-six, four forty.
And your forty-six, four forty is a little different than, than my schedule because.
We should have the same one.
You should, you should have forty, uh, there are cell phones stuck in, you have to look at column Q, not column R.
Forty-six, four twenty? No, that's a, that's a nurse.
It should be forty-six, four forty. But this one goes up to fifty or something. But do you have something you want to change there? Are you good?
Well, the, the statement made that he came back.
So he will be higher, so he's going to fifty thousand, six eighty-five.
Okay, but when he did come back, he didn't come back at, at what he left at. He, he was, he was moved down because the position, position wasn't there or the slot wasn't there. And now we wanna move him to where he was. So how? So how long has he been back?
It's on here. March of this year.
So he's, he's done nine months at a lower salary, oh, hoping, I guess, that
I mean, that was all the position, I mean, he
I'm, I'm good with that. It's kind of a, it's kind of a unique situation, in a way.
So then it's going to be, I'm just looking at the pay scale thing, too.
This, this process seemed easier last year when I was sitting out there.
It's just picking and choosing.
On the outside, booking in.
Well, I was here, though, I think I was here for all the hearings, and all the meetings, or whatever, but
Well, it was easier, we changed, we, we changed.
This is a money zero in years, we couldn't afford to do it.
Right. Hopefully this will be the worst budget you ever seen.
But I remember, I think the last thing my predecessor said when he left was
Worst budget he's ever seen?
No, no, he said, "Take care of your people," that's what he said.
So the, I mean, that just puts it over the top for a EPH one or two. So I don't mind giving them, rewarding them, you know, for coming back, they saw the errors of their mistake for leaving us. But I'm just we're paying them EPH two, so if that's what we're going to do, then then might as well give them a title, too. And that's just something that I've dinged others on, so I'll someone to bring that up as well. All right.
Are good?
I'm good.
Good. Um, we do need to talk about Christie's salary, so we did adjust it due to COVID. I left it in there at what it currently is, if you guys want to make any change to that.
Well, let me throw something out, this, this is just thinking out loud, which is dangerous. Her five-point-five is computed on what number?
On the current amount, so the one, oh, one, two, thirty, six, sixty.
Is that the right way to do it?
I'm bringing to you in closed session to ask you that question because it is supposed to end according to pay form I had on December eleven.
So the amount that we were paying extra was through the relief funds, right? Was it a flat amount, or was it a percentage?
It was a hard, um, no, it was so much, it was seven dollars an hour.
Because I think you should back that out and do the percent raise, and then if we decide
That's what, that's one of my thoughts, is go back to the
Prior to the seven dollars.
Right, whatever that salary was, times five-point-five, that's, that's the COLA for that position.
And then if we do the seven dollars on top of it, it's on top of
If we do, if we renew it, that's on top of it, so.
I need that number.
Does that make sense?
That's fine. Just know in the back of your head, if, if you do not decide to change her salary by that amount, she will be limited with the ARCA funding, because the max you can do is the thirteen dollars an hour, or twenty-five thousand. So I don't think you can double dip here. So if you're saying she's still getting, has her pay at seven dollars an hour, that takes that seven dollars
Out of the thirteen.
Right.
That's fair.
Okay.
Okay, just so you all know
There's still a lot going on, because this morning, you know, because of our Attorney General, the schools are, there was a meeting
He's saying they can't do it, didn't he?
At one o'clock, where all the school districts, you know, our, our school were getting together, Christie was initiating that.
So that will go there. This can go back to you. I don't have anything else in the Health Department, you guys good?
I think that was it.
Yep.
Um, juvenile. Same thing, we had the one person that was going to the fifteen dollars an hour, I adjusted his adjustment back to be that.
That was the cook?
Um, then they had
Yeah.
Two others that they wanted to give twenty-five hundred dollars to, it was the receptionist and the office manager. And that was supposed to be the final change from all the changes she made in October.
That's the juvenile salary you have up there?
Yes. So it's this twenty-five hundred and this twenty-five hundred. Do we want to do the same thing here and adjust it back to what it was in total?
Sounds like a good plan to me.
And these adjustments are just adjustments that made the cut, there was other people that asked for adjustments, so they didn't make the cut, or what are we doing here?
Yep.
Well, they're getting the five-five, so
Who, who else made?
I don't know, did we knock anything off the list on her?
So I didn't get the breakdown on your adjustment of who they were for. I didn't get Greg's breakdown, and I didn't get the prosecutor's, so those are the three I know didn't get included. Because they weren't specific to people.
So Debbie, I, I guess you're asking, some people requested it and not getting it, but we've also had adjustments in prior years, or possibly they were asking for an adjustment, and the five-point-five COLA got them to where they wanted to be, so, and other reasons. So, we've, I don't, we've done this every year, we've had some that did, some that didn't. But if you don't ask, you're for sure not going to get it, so.
But we do ask.
You did, again this year? Did you, was that in yours, your request? Where's yours at? Where's commission at? We can go through that right now.
I didn't specify it for a person, just like the sheriff wanted merit money to do with his people, basically what it was in there for.
And he got some, didn't he?
I don't know, I missed that.
Because he asked for it, but I didn't, I didn't see it in your budget request, Debbie, so
It didn't get, it didn't get past the auditor, or
Right, so yes, she had
Okay, let's go.
Ten thousand dollars in adjustments, but it was not broken down by person. So anybody that asked for a flat amount, I didn't include.
Oh, for the commission budget, then Debbie did have it in there.
Yes.
Can you, uh, can you do something with that ten to identify it by dollar, by person? I'd look at it.
But to her argument, she's saying, just give me ten, and I'll go through evaluations and split it up that way, like the sheriff's going to do. So, not picking on either one of them, but I think that's what Debbie's saying, just give me a pot of money and let me, let me pick the winners and losers, and
But if, but if she knew what was in our heads, or on some other, in other heads, on how to, uh, ask for it by name versus by department, maybe she would have asked for it.
But, same with the sheriff, then, we can say, well, we want you to bring, you, you want, I want you to bring it to tell me who's going to get it, and so, I'm, I see what you're saying, but
And that's why it was just a pot of money, just like you were asking.
So, are there, is that where we're going now to the commission?
Let's, let's finish that, and then we do have those departments that ask, like, the prosecutor did the same thing, we've done maintenance. So we'll circle back around and make sure we pick them up. Let's finish the ones that are in here at the moment.
Keep going, whatever order you headed in, and
The prosecutor was the same way, because it was a, a flat ask of seventy-five thousand dollars. There was no definition of what the seventy-five thousand dollars was for. It was merit pool of seventy-five thousand dollars.
So it could all go to one, or it could be split seventy-five ways if you had seventy-five people?
Yes.
That's what happened with merit, the one
Easier. Not easier, but
Should we make this, follow the same rule for him?
That he has to submit something to break it down?
Yeah.
That's fine, I mean, I think you sent him an email, did you not?
Yeah, he's out down or something this week, too, so I don't know what it's
He's on the agenda for Tuesday, too, for closed session because of those two pay forms. So we can ask him if that's going, but I know we want to get this done, too.
So, we are down to and child support was the same way. They asked for additional four percent merit pool.
We're not believer, we're not a believer in pools, we're a believer in name and amount.
Depends what fund you're in. I'm not being smart, but
Yes, you are.
Trying not to be smart about it.
Now you're just trying to trick us. I'm not trying to be smart, wait a minute.
So, do you want to reach out to them as well?
You've met Debbie, our fourth commissioner, right?
Right, no.
Oh, Debbie, let's have fun with you.
Yes, what was the question?
Reach out to child support to ask for that as well?
Well, I mean, is that, do you make that ask at the same place?
Um, yes.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, because they came down together.
Yeah, that's right. Child support, yes.
So
I, I was getting confused with Boca or Baca or whatever, but
Yeah, we, we don't know about those two grants.
Those two grants are
That's what she's, she's worried about is the one, because it, we should have got notification on it.
Um, so now we're back to parks, are we good with a person in parks, is that a part-time person in parks?
I am, but I'm on the Parks Committee, that's why I'm saying yes.
I still, well, okay, I'm fine with us designating a person to do parks, but not adding a person from Public Works to do. We're either adding a person to parks, or we're adding a person to Public Works, I guess.
Well, so you're not really adding a person to Public Works. You're adding a person to parks, so you're not removing one, and it, it's not a trade
There is a net one additional warm body is in front of us here, and and at this point, that, that person is landing in, under the parks title.
Yes.
Because Public Works doesn't really want to give up a person. Although, in his, like, current year, his past year, there has been a person in Public Works that has worked a lot in parks.
So that's really the part-time piece, that we were paying eighteen thousand dollars to Public Works for a portion of someone's salary. We're leaving that part-time person there, but we're not removing anybody from Public Works, so
And that number is forty-two for next year?
Forty-two for the full-time person, eighteen thousand for a part-time person, plus benefits.
Well, I like the idea of having them in the winter time, if it's snowing.
Is it? Okay, has that person been identified?
The full-time person?
Yeah.
I think they have someone from Public Works that wants to apply, but I don't think that there's been any, I think they're going to open it up, I don't know, like, open
So that part-time person is a retiree?
The part-time person has been identified, and yes, it would be a retiree.
I know there's a lot to do in parks, but I don't know if it really requires that full-time person for the full, full year, I think that person is going to
Well, but in the, in the winter
Well, I, I'm just saying, it doesn't snow every day, even in the winter, but, so I, I think that person really is going to float back over there and help.
Well, so their argument is that, like, emptying the trash, checking for graffiti, you know, checking the bathrooms, but I don't see that as a whole day. Now, they are going to do the landscaping of the buildings, so trimming of trees, pulling up weeds.
Not here.
No.
Yes, the landscaping piece.
Landscape, sure.
Yeah, not the mowing.
So, so then, take one from maintenance and move it to parks, or take half one from maintenance and move it to parks, and half one from, uh, Public Works, to where we're not really adding anybody, because that's going to take some stuff off the plate of maintenance, which I really think we could have a separate person doing.
Well, I tried to bring that up a little bit, and even add another half-time person in parks and have them do all the mowing and even the sidewalks and things, like
I, I don't disagree, I think that would be a good way to, well, to look at it, anyway.
Well, and, I mean, I don't know that Greg's fully staffed at the moment, but he does have one person, I think, that's talking about leaving during the year, and maybe through attrition eliminating one here and adding one
They could concentrate on maintenance, actual maintenance of the buildings, custodial work in the buildings, and be focused on that.
I will put in my two cents, I wish they cleaned more. The bathrooms upstairs aren't disgusting.
There's a, if you go to cokeine.org, employee portal, you can go onto the custodian IT, or custodian request thing, and I'd fill them out, I mean, if we have to add us to the email list, too, because I should go to
Talking to, like, anybody that's having issues with cleaning, we can go out and fill out a
Absolutely, yeah. Because they'll get the emails, and that's what we're doing with Public Works, too, and it holds them accountable, they've got the list to go with. So, and really, you're not interrupting them, then, with a phone call, they're trying to get other stuff done, you're calling, so. I think so, anyway. So, back to the groundskeeping. What your assaults are on that. So that he does have one retiring midway through the year.
I don't know that for sure, I don't know that he's filled out paperwork or anything, but I've heard a rumor up to that
And it may be even to the end of the year.
Right, it may not be, it may be December, next year, I don't know.
Okay.
I, I think that one's one you need to kind of look at, if, if we could hire out some of the custodial things, or, you know, but mowing under parks, is that freeing up the maintenance to truly do maintenance? Maybe it's, maybe it's painting, or, you know, things to upkeep, to try to prevent us from having to spend more money, I don't know. But that's just, again, my two cents, I don't know that
Well, they're already going to do the snow in the parking lots, what other stuff were they going to do to take that off of us?
Well, so it's not all the snow, so parks right now is snow in the parking lot, not the sidewalks.
Correct. But that's where I would go, is if, if they're going to do it, just have them come out here and do the sidewalks at the same time.
I, I guess that's what you guys think, what is the, the end game, what is the I think you have the ability, if you're going to create that Parks Department, to define what their responsibilities are.
I, I'm tainted, because I attend these parks meetings, I see the enthusiasm and the, um, thoughts of the Parks Committee people, and they want, they want to see our parks bigger, better, more used, and, so
I, I don't have an argument with that, as long as we figure out a way to create some revenue to pay for parks.
Well, that's like, I don't know, that's like saying, we, yeah, let's, we, we, we need to build that road, but we got to have some, we need to generate some revenue to build that road. Some things you just, you know, the, some things you furnish to people, and you don't ask them to pay for it directly. I mean, well, okay, we've, we've got a little pavilion out there, I don't know if we rent that thing out, or
So there is a small amount of revenue in rental fees for the pavilion. But I could see parks growing exponentially, at what point do you say, I can't afford to do more parks?
And then, you know, they want to do, uh, they want to do a dog park, uh, you know, where people, it's going to be fenced, so want to let your dog run a little bit, but, uh, I don't see charging an admission price to bring a
No.
Little dogs, or fifty cents?
You know how much money we make at our Lions Club for the ballfields by having signs on those fence every year? A lot of money, and that's something that we could look into, and when I was talking to some of these groups that were looking at the, the dog parks, I mean, that's, that's an option.
The next time they, they, they do the disc golf redo, uh, every hole could be sponsored, what, you know, it's going to have a sponsor on it.
The one down there at Taos is talking about doing that, and they contacted me about it, and so
Wouldn't need another person to keep track of it.
It's not going to, it's not going to be a windfall, that's going to take care of everything else for parks, but every little bit helps.
Honey Creek there, I guess like fifty dollars or forty dollars or something, but I had my name on there, so
They put it on the bathroom, in the stall with your phone number. Sorry, Sam.
Shiny object, back to parks. Are you all three good with a full-time and a part-time person at the moment?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna say yes, and see what happens.
I, I'd say, well, let's try it, you know, potentially we could have another park sometime in the future too.
So we're going to add a position to the parks, and Public Works will keep their guy that used to take care of it, and.
And I assume they're providing a truck.
Yeah, I'm not really wanting to add one, but you got two of them, so. Run!
So the question was posed, did Public Works' part-time reduce? If I could pull it up correctly. And it did slightly. It went from fifty-two-four to forty, so twelve thousand four hundred. Okay, um, circuit clerk. She currently has, or has had, since we misspoke, it was thirteen, we added a part-time person, it was eleven dollars an hour for a thousand-hour person.
For a temporary fix to get something done.
It was to do scanning to try to get the files out of the attic. We have asked her for information about that project, but it was supposed to be a one-year help us out kind of thing, that was in two thousand thirteen. It's still here, it's growing, um, we want to take it to thirteen fifty.
Moving it to a part of a different direction for helping train her people.
Yeah, so, the discussion the other day doesn't make me feel like they're doing scanning anymore. I took it to thirteen fifty for the thousand-hour person, she wanted to add an additional five hundred hours to that.
And that's more for training, because what I put out a note is, that's more for training.
So, uh, my two cents is that if they're not doing the original job that they were out there to do, I don't know why we're still funding that position, but.
That's a fair question. I had the same question.
So, I don't know how long you want to give, Donnell, to respond, Debbie sent an email yesterday or the day before?
By next Tuesday.
I can already send an email to her, I did not put a drop dead, I said as, I think I said as soon as possible, maybe I did.
My, I don't know if you want to put in the commissioners, speaking for the commissioners, commissioners are questioning, uh, the continuation of, of the expenditure when it seems that it drifted away from the original intent.
And it's kind of what I did in, in the original, you know, basically tell us where you're at on this project, you know?
Yeah.
But, I mean, I can get more stern with it.
So it's one year back in twenty thirteen, here we're in twenty twenty-one. Yeah, I, I, we need.
And I, I know Jeff likes to pay for things for the state.
How many boxes do we have in the third attic?
A bunch.
They should, I thought they were down to one page of information, and I thought that they had made an instant pitch, so I don't know what's left in that.
I think that we should have an estate sale of some of those cabinets and of those, because some of those are invaluable, people would buy.
And I have said that we really.
Probably getting them down here.
Yeah.
Well, that's true.
We really need to get that stuff down.
That's part of the deal, you buy it, you get it out.
So, I think that that's a problem as well, though, that set of steps is the worst set of steps.
I don't know how you even get them up there.
Well, some of that stuff, you can't get out of there, but the cabinets could come down the steps, but.
They did that with the big mainframe, they took out the window, brought the mainframe in, I remember that.
Yeah, well, there's a desk up there in Bill Varzold's office, that the only way it's coming down is out the window. You're not going to come down the steps unless you're scared of the bar.
I've got assault.
But I really do think at some point that stuff needs to come out. Whose job it is, I think there's a liability issue, if you tell the person that bought it, they have to move it, because if they fell down the steps or something.
But definitely, if we do something different with that comp, so we have this comp, or this project that we're talking about, that needs to be at the same time.
Because there is a, I don't know, there's probably fifty file cabinets up there.
Most of them came from surplus property anyway, so they're pretty bad, you know, so we got them.
I was going to say, what are you going to do with them when you take them out of there?
Just sell them.
I will tell you, the thing that makes the most money off surplus sales for us is file cabinets.
Really?
Yes.
They're great storage.
They haven't seen those.
Use them in your garage, your shop.
Those are not like.
But people put them in their garage or whatever, just, I mean, storage, people buy them, especially those older metal, metal cabinets.
Well, they're, I thought y'all were saying they're in pretty bad shape though.
I don't know, some of them are.
But they're antique, it makes them more valuable, Jeff.
Okay.
Just makes them old.
I don't know if I've missed anybody or anything, um, we do have a few departments, we want some more information on, I don't know that you're going to get it by tomorrow. So my suggestion would be that we do not meet tomorrow, other than you do have something on the agenda, I think, in the morning. Appointment to, um.
Oh, well, appointment to, uh, Heartland Port Authority. Yeah, uh, let's see, when is that meeting? I think that will work, uh, hold on a minute.
Is that closed session?
Jeff, do you remember what the closed session was?
Personnel. Oh, tomorrow, you have a close tomorrow?
We really.
Jeff, it was a.
No, we, we should do this, uh, is it on tomorrow?
It is, but there's a closed session too, so if you have to be here for the close, do you get, I don't know. My suggestion would be, though, that we don't meet tomorrow, we wait and meet Tuesday, and try to wrap up all the final things and see if we get the information requested.
That, that works, the Heartland Port Authority Board meeting for December is on the sixteenth, so.
You could still.
We could do this on Tuesday, the fourteenth, the.
The appointment.
The appointment. And the close is for tomorrow too?
There's a closed personnel.
Well, it's from, from Tuesday's closed, and we said we were.
Yeah, we just decided on the seventh to do that.
Well, I thought we were trying to bring luck in, but he cannot, because he's out.
Oh.
I think if you look, you're right, if you look at the original, I don't know why, when I bring it up on my phone, then when we cross out ones, it's not showing up. Do you have your original calendar on your, on your?
Too long.
I got this, closed session, personnel. Appointment to the Port Authority, meeting to start at eight AM, we'll break for lunch, budget discussion.
Anyone listening, or do you have a closed session, please let us know.
Yeah, I scratched it out, I don't know why, when I look at my phone, it doesn't scratch out, so, no, we do not have a closed session.
It's not scratched out on mine either, try to make.
I don't know why it doesn't do that.
So are you guys good with that? No, we need tomorrow, then try to wrap up Tuesday?
Yes.
I mean, we're really close, it's just those, um, it's just those final departments, we've requested additional information. Oh, I do have one response we did get, so Eric Lindwehr responded.
I'll hear that.
That there are two additional iPads that he needs to get the service for on top of the two hotspots. Are you guys good with me adding that back in?
I am, yes. I'm worn out, so I'm.
I want to do my budget last, and you guys are worn down, there you go Debbie, commission budgets last. I, I don't know, I just get confused about the hotspots and the iPads, which an iPad can be used as a hot, hotspot, so I. If Brian said okay, then I'm all right with it.
Well, I think it was Brian's recommendation that they add two hotspots, but that's in addition to them one, two more iPads.
Just, I'm fine adding it, when they run out of money, they're just out of money, so if that's what they want to use it on, so.
We're going to do that, that's the only one I had respond, Debbie, did you have a running list of who we sent questions to? I did not, too, after that.
I just, I'd have to look at my emails, because I've sent all of them.
Oh, speak to the devil, there he is.
Where's your hat?
Whoa, that's bad luck, we're inside.
Bad luck to run with scissors too. Actually, you can just remove the scissors part of it, it's bad luck to run.
We're done for the day, Brian, go away.
This is the perfect time to show up.
No.
Yes, we're worn down, worn down and grouchy.
I tried to get help you on the phone.
I know, well, it rang and I.
It was on Do Not Disturb.
What did you, something come before us?
No, I was, uh, I heard, I heard my department being mentioned, the way that the salaries increased and stuff like that.
Oh, did we ever say anything on that one?
I thought you agreed to.
You agreed to five and a half percent?
We did.
No.
You want me to go get her?
Yeah, we're still in open session, so, uh, do we want a recess until four-thirty?
Did we do?
Are you wanting to recess, or do you want to talk about?
Yeah.
I thought I had you back the hotspots.
No.
Oh, yes.
You did the hotspots, but you also had a request in there for. Your employees too, did we ever talk about that?
We did.
Yeah.
Did y'all approve it?
No.
Okay.
Wait, gave you five and a half?
No.
Public Works had in their original budget two additional hotspots, and now they're adding two additional tablets with internet service. So, Jeff's confusion was the difference between why do we need two hotspots if we're getting tablets that have cellular service?
Unless they're in a tablet four, yeah.
Why can't the pad, if the pad's going to be activated?
It's recommended by Brian Reidenhauer is how they put it in their budget.
I suppose there's certain other officials that use that name too.
So, I guess, if you have your, you can have your pad with its own number.
Right.
And you can have a hotspot with its own number. So, why would I just have an iPad with its own number that I can use as a hotspot, and I can do everything I need to do with it? So, otherwise I have a pad that's connected to the.
Yeah, right, well, I guess, my, that's my question, is, is there like four total?
That was the question we posed, and the answer we got, but.
I don't know, we need to find out, we need to ask.
Ask Brian.
The additional request for AT&amp;T internet service for two additional iPads that we plan to purchase. We also had two hotspots in our budget as recommended by Brian Reidenhauer, and those were approved by Kristen.
See, that sounds like the need, that, uh, they're going to use the hotspots for the iPads, because it didn't say iPads with cellular data.
Well, that's, that's what we're putting in, cellular data for the, for the iPads.
Yeah, so, yeah, you would need both.
So I can take one out?
As long as they're not going for four, like, if they're just going for two.
We need to, we need to get a clarification from them.
I think they already had two, and they have that, they are going for two more with the two new ones, sounded like, they did again.
The additional request for, was for AT&amp;T internet service for two additional iPads we plan to purchase.
So they got to.
We also have two hotspots in our budget as recommended by Brian Reidenhauer.
Well, Brian recommends that, it's got to be.
So it sounds like needed for.
I remember the conversation, if they already have two iPads, definitely with the hotspots, going to find additional two iPads with the cellular data.
But the, that's not what it.
And pie.
Because.
That makes sense.
They have fifteen tablets.
Yep, they have thirteen, they want fifteen.
So we have fifteen tablets with internet on them already, we want to add two more, and then we're adding two hot, two hotspots.
I don't remember, I, I remember them talking about.
Okay, someone called Eric Lindwehr, and he didn't answer to this question.
Hey, if he's not listening right now, he's on the.
John?
He should be listening.
We are not coming in tomorrow.
We all coming, we're coming in.
Now what?
Someone?
What?
Two-two-oh-two, on the phone.
Who?
Two-oh-two.
We'll go in an hour, I'll bring some cinnamon rolls. Hi, Kristen.
Two-two-oh-two.
Two-two-oh-two. I thought it was two-oh-two.
No, two-two-oh-two.
Hey, Erica, Sam. Hey, we're sitting here trying to figure out, you've got two tablets and then two hotspots. Do you need both?
Uh, we were just debating that here just not too long ago, we think we don't need one of the tablets AT&amp;T internet services. Uh, the two hotspots is recommended by Brian Reidenhauer, and that's to work at home for people that have to do that periodically, whatever, if they don't have good internet service.
Okay.
So it sounds like you're down to two hotspots and one iPad with cellular data.
Two hotspots and one iPad.
I'm just leaving this at thirteen-five-one-one.
Okay.
So, the hotspots, how do they not have, how's a hotspot going to help them have better service? If they don't have good service, the hotspots are about as bad as anything, getting around trees and hills and rocks and deer.
Teresa does not have enough, they're good enough with that service to be able to do the BSNA program. And she's had to work at home, working on time sheets.
I think Mollie has hotspot, yeah.
And it is something that can be, as I understand it, moved, you know, they can just be kept here if somebody needs to take a whole day to do that. You know, we, we might be able to just go with one.
Okay, but, what, did I miss the part about, are the pads? Got service or not?
The, it, the iPad will have an internet service with it.
So, you can use an.
These are separate, the.
You can use an iPad, you can use your phone, you can use whatever has service as a hotspot, right?
That's correct.
So why don't you bring one of the iPads you have home and use it as a hotspot instead of buying hotspots?
The iPads are checked out to certain people, it's not, there's not floaters.
These are two different, two separate.
Yes.
Two separate, it's not, the tablets and the iPad aren't one issue.
The tablet, they're separate, the iPad.
Hey, so I tell you, same thing I tell my kids, you can wait till Dylan gets done with it, and you can use this for your hotspot.
So there's an additional five hundred hours.
If they're, you have fifteen checked out, fifteen of them using it at home. I mean, my computer at home has got, where I can have, well, I've got like four users on it.
There are fifteen.
I don't want Kathy seeing anything that I'm looking at, might be looking at her Christmas present. All right, just Brian okayed it, so.
Yeah, Bri, Brian okayed it, so.
I, I see where you're coming from, Eric, I just, I think we could do it better ways instead of having to pay another thirty-five dollar a month fee for that, and forty.
Can we, uh, can, can you table that, and let me, we were just talking about our iPads, and, um, can I clarify that, uh, when Carrie gets back tomorrow?
Well, if it's okay there, but it's in your budget, if you don't need it, then you guys are good about not using it, and we got control over your budget, so we won't mess with you.
Jeff, we're planning on adding two iPads, and we just need one, so we can take it back one of the iPad services. But let me verify that a hundred percent.
Let's, let's make it as best as it is.
Okay.
On the hotspots, that's something that us, uh, and Brian had recommended too. Um, I'm, I'm okay if, if we need to just go with one, that'll save some money there too. So, can, can, can I, with, with Carrie being gone, uh, for the day, she'll be back tomorrow, I can clarify this, and we can get definite on it.
We have to know by Tuesday, Eric.
Next Tuesday's the drop dead date.
Ten o'clock.
All right, so if we need to change it, just let us know before next Tuesday, but did you hear what he's saying, basically, leave it the way it is, it's either a hotspot or an iPad.
Yeah, I think I'm just going to leave in there what we.
Two, so, okay, well.
Jeff, can I just, let, let me talk to Carrie in the morning, and I'll let you know by nine AM or so, what we need on that.
You're fine, like I said, just before Tuesday.
Okay.
It'll definitely be tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay.
Bye.
All right, thanks, Eric.
Second.
All right.
All right.
Wait, did we ever talk about Brian's employee?
He did, he said no.
No, we're in recess.
He didn't say no.
Let's try by call.
You got two that said no.
Okay.